Workshop in another location, so I'll bang the meeting into order. Want to welcome everybody to Tallahassee City Commission Meeting. It is Wednesday, the 18th at 3 o'clock, our first meeting of 2023, and it is going to be a fantastic meeting. We do not have a scheduled public hearing at 6 o'clock, so we will go until we are done with business and of course have unagenda speakers or speakers on unagenda items. But at this time, it is my honor and privilege to introduce Father Pascal Chester of St. Eugene Catholic Chapel, who will be providing the invocation. Father, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please rise. Following the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Father?
Let us pray. Lord God, your word in First Timothy, chapter 2, verse 1 to 4 reminds us, "We offer supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving for our people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. Father, we ask you to bless our mayor and the city council as they meet this day. With your word in mind, we pray and present our local leadership to you under your countenance for your divine assistance and the spirit of discernment. We thank you for their spirit of service and sacrifice in executing their responsibilities. We present their needs to you, oh Lord, as they continue to seek the very best for our city. Help them to be open towards you and towards each other, so that they may become more and more the instruments of your liberating action in the world of today. Father, help them with your spirit. They advocate that after this, their meeting, they may serve the people of Tallahassee with renewed energy to address the concerns of all his citizens. There are many burning issues that need the attention of this council. Therefore, Lord, grant them creative ways and means to engage the necessary authorities and the structures to continue to address the collective needs of the people. May each of us contribute to this meeting in a way that will strategically position our city for greater achievements. Thank you for always providing for our needs and blessing us with good health, peace of mind, and the basic necessities of our living. We make this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ, your son, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father, thank you so very much for joining us today. We appreciate you providing the invocation to start our meeting. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have a great meeting today. Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. One item has been pulled, item 8.04, was pulled at the request of Commissioner Matt Lowe from the consent agenda and has been renumbered as 9.01.
Any questions on the modification? Okay, seeing none, we have a series of presentations today. So, Mr. Manager, let me go ahead and turn it over to you to introduce our first speaker for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me invite to the podium to my left, to the right of the front of the room, a friend of the city and a resident of the city, Amy Zubelley. She's the Executive Director of the Florida Municipal Electric Association. She represents the association of municipal electric utilities around the state that serve more than 3 million homes and businesses, and she's the glue that keeps us together. And by the way, when we see all the out-of-state and out-of-town workers, when we have a hurricane, we can thank Amy because she personally has recruited them here, among other things. But thank you, Amy, for what you do, and we appreciate you being here to present some awards from the Florida Municipal Electric Association.
Absolutely. Thank you, Reese, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having me this afternoon. As Reese mentioned, I'm Amy Zubelley. I'm the Executive Director of the Florida Municipal Electric Association. Actually, we were just doing a population count the other week. We're now up to about 4 million.
Oh, wow.
So, we were always teetering right around 3, but population's grown in Florida, so we represent about 4 million people in the state of Florida. FMEA is the statewide trade association that represents Florida's 33 public power or municipally-owned electric utilities like the city of Tallahassee. And one of my favorite things about my job is to be able to award our member utilities with jobs well done in certain areas. And so today, I'm really excited to be able to be here to present two awards to the city of Tallahassee, along with a recognition from our national association, the American Public Power Association.
Amy, can I invite everybody up while you present those awards? We've got a number of folks in the back. Y'all can't be shy. Y'all got to come up here, because the awards are for you.
They're really excited about that.
Henry and David and team, y'all come up too, please.
Come on.
So first, FMEA's Building Strong Communities Award recognizes Florida Public Power Utilities for their community-focused programs. Recipients are recognized for their efforts to offer programs and services that enhance the quality of life to their community. Some of the programs that the city in Tallahassee has done to earn this award include the PREP Program, which is the Plan for Readiness and Emergency Preparedness, Change for Change Program, and Project Share, along with rebates and grants and loans for energy efficiency upgrades. Secondly, FMEA's Restoring Community Award recognizes Florida Public Power Utilities that have either provided or received mutual aid assistance or provided exemplary service to their community following a significant weather event. The city of Tallahassee was extremely unfortunate to not be severely impacted by either Hurricanes Ian or Nicole. However, we all saw the devastation in the southwest part of the state, and many of our public power friends were not quite as fortunate as we were. So, the city of Tallahassee was able to provide assistance to some of the other public power utilities in need. But you know, mutual aid doesn't just occur following a hurricane, and whether it be a tornado, or a winter storm, or a bad summer storm, these guys are always ready to go out and lend support to others in need. In addition, the American Public Power Association, which is the national trade association that represents more than 2,000 public power utilities in the country, has also recognized the city of Tallahassee with a mutual aid commendation. I mean, I'd also be remiss without saying that the city of Tallahassee has also received an APPA Excellence in Communications Award for the great work the communications department does, as well as the EF Scattergood System Achievement Award, which is what gives city of Tallahassee the number-one public power utility in America. So, with that, congratulations to both the city and to you all as residents for our great utility that you have here.
Absolutely. All right, I'm going to give you all about 20 seconds to figure out who's coming up to say something here in a second. But hey, ladies and gentlemen, let me tell you something. When we have the storms that come through, you know, we all want our power back on. We all want our utilities back on. You are looking at the men and women that make that happen. You're looking at the men and women. Leave the comfort of their homes with their families so that we can stay at home and have our power restored. And I can tell you all, I talk to my colleagues across the state of Florida, especially in southwest Florida, and the work that you all did after the hurricane came through was second to none, and it makes us all so proud to work with you each and every day. On a personal note, I don't think we had to do it this year, but you know, I got family over in Lafayette, Louisiana, and you all have been over there quite a bit as part of the agreement to help them out when they get hit by the storms. And the mayor over there, everyone is just so very thankful, because when we roll into town, we bring the best of the best, the number-one public utility in the nation, and you all make us shine, and we're very, very, very proud of you. With that, are you going to speak on behalf of everybody? Come on up.
All right. So as the love man on the totem pole, I get nominated for this every time. But first, I just want to start off by thanking Amy and her staff, and to kind of echo what Reese had mentioned earlier, this year alone, Amy and her staff of only six people coordinated the efforts of 175 different utilities from 23 states of the state of Florida. So that's pretty amazing, if you think about it. During Hurricane Ian, in less than 72 hours, 99% of municipal powers, 1.5 million customers were within power. And that's a testament to Amy and her work. But also, just to kind of deflect to our team, it's these men and women that make it all happen. As a newcomer to the city, I'm blown away by the preparedness that we have, and I'm proud to be a part of it. So, thank you all.
I'm going to make a couple more comments while you get everybody together and go ahead and talk and tell how we're going to squeeze in for a picture. On a final note as well, Amy, I also want to give you a sincere thank you on behalf of city of Tallahassee. We have this crown jewel that lives right here in Tallahassee because the association is located here. But when storms happen across the state of Florida, the coordination of these efforts comes from Amy Zubelley and her team right here in Tallahassee. So, we are thrilled to have your organization. We're thrilled to have you here, and thank you so much for everything you do. I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention that Amy and I were both waiters and waitresses at Applebee's 30 years ago when we were in college together. So, we bring that to the table as well, but thank you so much. Let's jump in.
I don't think they'll see me.
All right, everybody, run to the camera. All right, it is my honor to ask Dr. Robin Hassler-Thompson, the Executive Director of the Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center, along with the Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center Board members, the International Rescue Center, and the Florida Alliance to End Human Trafficking, to please come join. And I really appreciate each and every one of you being here this afternoon. Robin, so good to see you. Ladies and gentlemen, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas sex and labor traffickers target and exploit millions of people around the world, as well as here in Tallahassee, generating an estimated $150 billion annually. And whereas traffickers especially target children and adults who are abused, economically insecure, disabled, immigrants, discrimination against LGBTQIA+, and many more who for any reason are vulnerable. And whereas Florida is the third in the nation for calls to the National Human Trafficking Hotline. And whereas the city of Tallahassee seeks to be free of any form of human trafficking and to support those who are vulnerable to sex and labor traffickers, promises, lies, and coercion, respecting all as fully human and worthy of community support and freedom. And whereas both the public and private sectors have important roles in preventing and ending trafficking, and in recognition of this, the city of Tallahassee funds and supports the efforts of the Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center to educate the business community and provide direct assistance to trafficked persons and recognizes the efforts other local advocates, such as the International Rescue Committee and the statewide efforts of the Florida Alliance to End Human Trafficking. Now therefore, I, John E. Daly, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize January as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month and urge the residents of Tallahassee and communities everywhere to learn the signs of human trafficking, act together to support those who are vulnerable, fortify our neighborhoods, and inform workplaces and businesses to act against all forms of human trafficking and bring human traffickers to justice. In witness of each and every one of you, I have read into the record, signed with my signature, John Daly, dated January 18, 2023. It is Robin, it's my honor and privilege, both as a colleague but also as a friend, to present this proclamation to you and to the entire community of support for all that you do for the Tallahassee Leon County community. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, sir.
We'll get another picture in a second. Go ahead, Robin. Anyone else?
Yes, please. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city commissioners. We're so honored and grateful to be with you today. We appreciate you so much and everyone who's here today. As the mayor said, my name's Robin Hassler-Thompson, and I'm the Executive Director of the Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center, or STACK, you may hear us called. We're an agency turning eight years old next month, and we're here to do three things, really. The first and most important is to support and empower the survivors of sex and labor trafficking. We do that with the help of my wonderful colleague, Graciela Marquina, who is STACK's community services advocate. We also do work as a hub agency. If you know anything about trafficking, you know that a trafficking survivor could be a toddler or could be an 80-year-old man from India. How could you possibly have one agency do everything that needs to happen to support that wide range of possible victims? So, the only way we can do this work is in community and with one another, and that's why we are so grateful and remain so grateful to the city of Tallahassee for funding our education efforts, the big one is called STACK Pro now, and also to support our work with survivors. I want to also take a moment to emphasize that very often you hear Hollywood and other places talk about trafficking and act like it only happens in big cities. It only happens in Atlanta, or Tampa, Miami, and we know it's right here, and I see you nodding. It is right here, and that includes labor trafficking. Sometimes people think it only happens in agricultural areas, but I can tell you right now, our caseload, half of our caseload is survivors of labor trafficking, and it's right here in Tallahassee. It could be in our restaurants, hotels, it could be landscaping, construction, it could be in any of these industries that are in our municipality of Tallahassee. I also want to share with you gratitude around your funding STACK Pro. So, stackpro.org is a business, is a training for workplaces and all businesses to be aware of how to recognize, respond, and refer possible survivors for services. STACK Pro is funded this year by the city of Tallahassee, last year funded by the county, Leon County, and I see Sheriff McNeil, thank you for all you do, and also the city of Tallahassee to address this very important issue. Last year, after doing a training on human trafficking, I just want to tell you one quick anecdote, which is Capital City Bank asked STACK to provide a training to all their public-facing employees. After the second of three trainings, a teller told her supervisor, she thinks she sees something. And I know, again, Sheriff McNeil, see something, say something, he say it all the time. She saw something, told her supervisor, who called bank security. Bank security contacted STACK, and we told them who to contact when it comes to money laundering, because that's what was going on. When I contacted the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, personally hooked them up, they said, Robin, you know, we saw something going on, we couldn't put the pieces together, but thankfully that teller saw something and said something, and they were able to launch a money laundering investigation. So, you know that that happens, yes. Just when you think about that, STACK helped acting as a hub. If there are potential survivors, we will. We haven't heard from that case, but we also were trainers and educators. So, we are so grateful to you for that. This month, we ask you to go to surviveandthriveadvocacy.org, look at all the things going on, starting, well, it's already been starting, it's been going on, all this month, having to do with educating our community. These resources are free and available to everyone in the community, specialized, and we are so, again, grateful to you. As the mayor mentioned, we do this work in community with our colleagues. So, I'd like to ask if the International Rescue Committee, who is our wonderful colleague providing these services, would like to say anything, as well as the Florida Alliance Against Human Trafficking.
Hi there, my name's Dani. I am the International Rescue Committee's Housing Specialist.
I'm the International Rescue Committee's Anti-Trafficking Caseworker.
Being third in the country is not something that I think any of us wear as a badge of honor when it comes to talking about something like instances of human trafficking. Work that we do on the ground, doing direct service implementation is one piece of the puzzle when it comes to, you know, eradicating and making an end to human trafficking in our communities. But instances like this proclamation also help us. They help us talk about this, have dialogues, and educate our community members. They give us the ability to have conversations with people, to deliver them with literature, so that they can educate themselves on what human trafficking actually is. Something that I know that we come across a lot is people having experienced things like human trafficking, but not fully recognizing it in themselves, because it doesn't look like what they're most familiar with. Proclamations like this give us the ability to explain to them that human trafficking is not exactly what, you know, the movies or television make it out to be, and that it's a more pervasive issue than we, you know, fully understand. In Florida, being number three in the country, we know that it's bad, and instances like this give us the ability to educate our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Erin Collins. I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director of the Florida Alliance to End Human Trafficking. We're with my, along with my colleague, Robin Blank, we are the direct support organization for the statewide council on human trafficking and focused on funding and support and increasing awareness. Like these wonderful organizations here, who have mentioned that proclamations, resolutions, open the dialogue to a conversation in recognition of Awareness and Prevention Month. But unfortunately, as we know, these horrific crimes and exploitive activities take place 365, 24/7, in every ZIP code, no no boundary from a demographic, gender, equality aspect. So, again, to Robin's point, we challenge you to take a training, to learn to spot the signs. I'm sure Sheriff McNeil would state, you know, law enforcement can't do it without you. We need our community partners, our members. Everyone is out, you know, running errands, going to the grocery store, traveling across our beautiful state, and they need those tips. So, once you take a training, have that better information, report the call, don't turn a blind's eye. You never know what you might be preventing or stopping from occurring. So, thank you so much.
I didn't recognize our board members, Dr. Cicely Brantley, who's here too, so of course, thank you.
Three, two, one.
First, let me take a second to recognize the High Sheriff, who's here with us. Sheriff McNeil, good to see you. Thank you. I am going to ask my colleagues to please come join me down at the podium for the last presentation of the day, a very, very special presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, as we start 2023, I am committed, as your mayor, to celebrating and honoring incredible individuals in this community. And as your mayor, I have the sole discretion to bestow this honor. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Judy Mandrell, to please come forward and please bring, Dr. Mandrell, come join us too, Joe, come join us. And in fact, if you want your family to come join us, we would love to have them all here with us. Anybody that, come on up, please. Come on up, take your time. We live in a great community, and it's extremely important that we take the opportunity to represent the best of the best that make our community an absolutely an incredible place to live, work, and play. I see our public defender is here with us as well. That's good, good to see you. Please.
Judge Tiffany Baker.
Where's Judge Baker? I didn't see Judge Baker. Oh, come on, come on up, come on up. Your Honor, I'm sorry. Sheriff, come join us, please. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Judy Mandrell is a community treasurer who has touched and empowered the lives of countless families in our community for over 40 years. She has spent her life serving others, empowering, inspiring, and making pathways for others to follow. She is the proud wife of 41 years to the other pastor, Dr. Mandrell, Gerald Mandrell. It's a power couple I've ever heard. Dr. Mandrell is a 1981 graduate of Florida A&amp;M University, where she received her bachelor's in social work. She is the co-pastor of Life Changers Church of God and Christ, where I've had the opportunity to worship with both of the co-pastors, and it's just a wonderful family. Dr. Mandrell is also the founder and CEO of Dream Builders Greatness Center Incorporated, which serves as a community service facility for juveniles and ex-felons who are transitioning back into society to assist in finding employment in homes. She is an international host on her own radio show, Real Talk with Judy Live Radio Show, which I think all of us at one point or the other have had the opportunity to be on as well. She is an amazing individual. We have all been touched by Dr. Mandrell and the work that she does in our community. I think I speak for not only the city commission or the county commission, but for literally tens of thousands of individuals, from the youngest of the youngest to the oldest of the oldest amongst us, to say thank you so very much. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please stand? As the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, it is my honor and my sole discretion to present to Dr. Judy Mandrell for outstanding service to the city of Tallahassee, January 18, 2023, the key to the city of Tallahassee.
Very seldom am I lost for words, and very, very seldom do I want to just cry, and I am honored. First, I thank God for this recognition and for the opportunity to serve. I am honored. There are some others. Dr. Willie Anderson, come up here. Amen. I am, I don't know, I am Florida, and I want to say to Mayor, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim, thank you. Commissioner Richardson, thank you. Commissioner Porter, thank you. Commissioner, I got him. Matlow, thank you. I learned a lesson from Commissioner Matlow long before he ran, and I told him that this has become part of me. I was in a meeting with him one time, and he only had like a bunch of white men on his board, and he said in the meeting, if we are to make a difference, we have to be intentional about making the difference, that we have to be intentional about looking around and helping each other. My husband is here, thank you, sweetheart, for allowing me to do what I do. We've been married 41 years, and I told him that God created him just for me. Yeah, I'm his wife, and he created me for him. I want to say, my mom is watching on one of these things. I want to thank the city of Tallahassee for praying for my mom. Everybody who know me know I'm a mama's girl, and the Monday after Thanksgiving, she coded. She's 83. She coded, but she came back. She don't have all the strength that she can, all the strength that she could have, but she get to see this today. I never thought this would happen. I don't plan on crying, because them lashes had come off. But to have her here, just to see this, mean everything to me, and even for this honor to come and Judge Baker rearrange her schedule, Tiffany, our public defender rearrange her schedule, Sheriff Walt McNeil rearrange his schedule. I told him, I don't know what I'm getting, but I would like to have you all here, because they have made a great impact on my life. And my mentor, Mother DK Richardson, who's 94 years old. The commission on the status- The Commission on the Status of Women and Girls are here. I serve with the NAACP, they're here. So many people. Ms. Joan Rockehannon, Mama, my grandmama is here. So many of you. I wore this coat not really knowing what, but I wore this coat because I believe this is what I represent. It's coat of many colors, different patterns, different styles, because that's how I love to work with this community. My sister girls are here. They are here. We got our honorary sister girl. One of our NFL moms who I served with on the, I had opportunity to speak with them. So it's a plethora of people here, and I want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve. This mean, my Lord, I can't get it. I got it. This mean everything. And Mayor, I am determined not to make you or this city, I told Sheriff Walt McNeil that, or this city, shame for the way I conduct my life, or the way I live. I want you to be proud that Judy Mandrell is in this city. I came here in 1977, and I'm still here. I'm from Fort Lauderdale, and I'm still here, serving this city. I plan on serving it till the day I die. I do, and I hope that day in nowhere soon. But I want to thank you all. Thank you for believing in me. Thank you for trusting me. I do thank you. And to all of y'all, thank you. Deputy Sheriff Holmes, thank you. Man, I'm just happy and humbled. Thank you. And let me say to my brother and LaShawn, Ms. Pam Ridley, Club 25, I told y'all to come up here, but and Darryl Jones, thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your influence and encouragement all the time. He encouraged me and to, give me a hand now on the way it went. Rob, Rob, Robin Marvina Streeter, thank you. Three years ago, he said, you need the key to the city, and I laughed, not knowing that today. Three years later, my work is speaking for me, and I give God our praise. What do you say for someone who means so much to this city? I have had the pleasure of knowing Dr. Judy Mandrell and Dr. Judy Mandrell for a number of years, and you will find no harder working people to keep our community together. Some of you may be aware, you may not be aware, but there are a group of preachers, pastors, ministers who are praying for our city around the clock, around the clock. Pastor Judy Mandrell wakes up at 3:00 AM to pray for our city. They gathered ministers and preachers and pastors at their church to give the charge. For the first time ever, I believe, we are on one accord in praying for the gun violence and all the things that are going on in our city. So it is very fitting that she would receive this key to the city. I would say that she is a role model for me and for many others who want to see our city go higher. So thank you. You're thanking everyone. We want to thank you, Pastor Judy, Pastor Dr. Judy Mandrell, Judy Renee Mandrell. And I'm so pleased, so glad that her mom is able to watch this with her sister Tanya in Fort Lauderdale. So I call her mom Dr. Mama. So Dr. Mama, because she's a doctor as well. Dr. Mama, this day has finally come, and your baby girl is just who you prayed that she would be, added to to make sure she was where she was supposed to be, doing what she was supposed to do. And on this day, the key to the city is held by her, but you have the key to her heart. So God bless you all the way in Fort Lauderdale. We love you here in the city of Tallahassee, and we look forward to hearing from you soon. Thank you, Dr. Judy Mandrell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I first of all, want to tell Pastor Gerald Mandrell, as I tell people all the time, I am the proud chairman of the Married Up Club. And this is my co-chairman. But I certainly want to take this opportunity to congratulate Pastor Mandrell on this very well-deserved award. She has worked so hard in this community in so many different perspectives. As Mayor Pro Tem Williams Cox mentioned, she has organized our faith-based community to actually, because you know, the one thing that we have left out of all of this that is going on in our community is our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And without Him, we can't even begin to address these issues. And she has organized a faith-based community to pray for our community, but also to pray for those who are impacted, both the perpetrators and the victims of these senseless violent acts that are occurring in our community, and we thank her for that. I came to know Pastor Mandrell mostly through her work with the Sister Girl Network. And again, I am a proud honorary sister girl. And what she has done through that group is to bring women of all persuasions together in our community to address, again, the issues that impact them, but also that impacts our community, our families. And they have done a tremendous job in that respect, and we thank her for that. We couldn't ask for a better servant here in our community. She serves with the servant's heart. And I tell you, Pastor Mandrell, I tell you like some people tell me, I don't know when you sleep, because she's always in the community and doing things that make this city be the all-America city that she is. And so Pastor Mandrell, again, thank you so much for all that you do, and this award is just so well-deserved. Thank you.
Well, I too am a proud sister girl. And really, looking back at especially 2020 and 2021, really at the height of COVID, the Sister Girl meetings were some of my favorite memories. I mean, really, they were. They were so much fun. I mean, they still are, but those were some really special Zoom meetings. And I know that anytime I am with Dr. Judy, when I am with you, I am somewhere where I am welcome. I am somewhere where I'll be having a lot of fun. And, you know, you do have this, this aura around you that is peaceful, that is loving, and that also, and as I've said three times already, super fun, but that has is really grounded in what matters to people and what it's going to take to bring healing to our city. That's something I've always really admired about you, and congratulations on this honor. And I'm sure that I'll run into you at the Village Inn sometime soon.
Congratulations. I think just starting, if you look around the room right now, we just see a lot of positive energy. We see a lot of pride in people's eyes and their faces, and we all know why, because this is actually, this is a big deal, you know, the recognition we're taking today. Pastor Mandrell talked about our first meeting long before I was a city commissioner, speaking at a Women's Wednesday event, and we had a conversation about, you know, how do we improve our businesses? How do we improve our community? How do we improve our city? And knowing Pastor Mandrell since then, years ago, that's what it's always been about to her, is how do we improve our community? How do we improve our city? So I think Tallahassee is a better place because she's here advocating for community and for all of us. So I'm happy to see this award given, but it couldn't be more deserving. Congratulations.
Some years ago, I was the mentor. Today, I'm being mentored. We had, we started in Sunday School, and now I'm the 94 tag along. Thank you for the privilege.
Your day will come too, sir. I promise. But to close us out, please, Dr. Mandrell, Pastor Mandrell, if you will.
Well, I want to thank the mayor and the city commission just for this award for honoring my wife. One thing that I can truly say is that she loves every one of you genuinely. And I'm not saying that just as a cliche or anything. Matter of fact, she cannot even affect you if she's not loving you. And that is demonstrated by what she does. That's what drives her, what moves her, and what motivates her. The good thing about it, I'm able to live with her all these years. So, you know, I've experienced her pains, her likes, her joy, joyful moments, her hurting moments, and out of all that, it still never disrupt the love that she has, even as Commissioner Porter was saying, the awe that you feel around her, that's really the anointing of the Holy Spirit that is in her life, that she's actually betraying what God has given her to do. And so I am so very proud that the Lord blessed us to be together as husband and wife, and this honor as you're honoring her, I consider it as being the same as honoring me. And I'm so happy and very joyous of it. And I want to thank the city of Tallahassee and just for everyone, just for all that you have done and that you're doing. And we're looking forward to our city becoming even yet a greater city. The leadership that we have, I believe, are exemplary, and I'm just so overjoyed. And again, I just want to tell my wife, congratulations, I would bless you, and thank all of you just for being here and supporting her and continue to show your love for her. God bless you.
And while we're getting ready to take, while we're getting ready to take a picture, some of the other ones, y'all can come on, get in the picture. But this is what I wanted to say as well. February the 13th is my birthday, and I'm going to have a birthday party at Hotel Indigo. I'm inviting the whole city. At first, I was going to do a fundraiser, make it a fundraiser event, but I decided I'm just going to, after this key, I'm just going to open it up, and we just going to come and have fun. And I want everybody to come. It's February the 13th at 6:30 at the Hotel Indigo, and we're going to celebrate my 64th birthday. And I must say to my mama and my family, I am because we are, and we are because I am. Thank you, Sheriff.
First, look right into my camera, and then we'll do one of these cameras.
All right, in three, two, one. Come on more, three, two, one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. All right, squeeze in a little bit more. If you got to, yeah, there we go.
Okay, everybody right into this camera in three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Pastor Judy Mandrell, we love you. Congratulations. And what a great way to start the meeting. Mr. Mandrell, do we have any appearances by other appointed boards and governments and committees before the city commission today?
Yes, sir. We have item 7.01, which is the acceptance of the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls Annual Report. I believe Courtney Thomas, the Director of External Affairs and Special Projects, will introduce the presenter.
Excellent. Thomas, good to see you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to welcome up Director of the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls and our current Chair, Dr. Brantley, and Stephanie Schumate to the dais.
Wonderful. Let me start off by saying how much this commission truly appreciates the work that the commission does each and every year, and we're very fortunate to have you on our community.
Thank you so much, Mayor Daly and Commissioners, for having us today. As Courtney said, my name's Stephanie Schumate, and I'm the new Director of the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and we have our amazing Chair of our commission, Dr. Cicely Brantley. We're presenting our previous report, and as y'all know from the constant support that we've had from the city, from our 2.0 reimagining plan as we move forward into the year. So I'm going to actually turn it over to our wonderful chair to give a recap of last year, because I was not around last year. I joined y'all in November, so I'm excited to be here, and then we'll kind of talk through our 2.0 and where we're headed.
Thank you, Director Stephanie, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for having us here. I'm just, I'm really excited about what the commission has done in the prior year and what we are moving into this year. Just to get into that short recap, we did learn a lot about what, what had affected our community, especially our women and girls during COVID, because our theme for last year was the impact of COVID on women and girls in Tallahassee Leon County. So we had hall, town hall meetings, we had several speakers to come in from different sectors of the community who were able to share effects on our education, community, on the students. We had speakers that shared different effects on committee, community, I'm sorry, members, such as our LGBTQIA community. And those things were reflected in the, in the annual report that we submitted. Along with looking at the focus of the effects of COVID in general, we also focused heavily on Jedi principles, those principles of justice, equality, diversity, and inclusion, and how, you know, folks around, you know, folks that represent all walks of life were affected in different ways. Our recommendations address multiple areas, mental health, training, crisis response, sponsoring a girls' conference, data collection via surveys of women and youth in the LGBTQIA community. In all, to this point, the CSWG has made 142 recommendations to improve the lives of girls and women in Leon County and Tallahassee. And Director Stephanie will talk a little bit more about that in a bit, but I just want to say that moving into this CSWG 2.0, our focus this year is really on amplifying the voices of women and girls at the intersection. We know that there are many challenges associated with women and girls in our community specifically, but we also want to focus heavily on those women and girls who, in addition to being, dealing with the challenges and issues unique to women and girls, they're also dealing with challenges associated with being members of other marginalized communities. challenges associated with being members of other marginalized communities, like our LGBTQIA+ community, like those women and girls who are members of minority, ethnic, or racial groups, like those women and girls who are also dealing with disabilities, be they physical, mental, or otherwise. We want to make sure that in our efforts to make recommendations that support all of our women and girls, that we don't leave anyone out. And in doing that, we're focusing on those whose voices may have been least heard in the past, but we want to make sure that we make changes to that. So, with that being said, I want to turn it back over to Director Stephanie.
Thank you, Chair Brantley. So, it's just, I love working with Chair Brantley, but also, as you guys just honored Dr. Judy Mandrell, she's one of our Commissioners, and we are very lucky to have her. Now that she has the key to the city, I feel like, do we have the key to the city, maybe? I don't know. We'll have her bring it to our full Commission meeting on Friday, but that was, that's very deserving and well honored. But as we move forward with what's on the horizon for the CSWG 2.0, our top five priorities, and in the 2.0 plan, there were about 13 things outlined as we kind of look at the next one to five years of the CSWG. And Dr. Brantley hit on a couple of those, but one of the first being, and we, you know, and y'all just had your planning retreat today, all day, but to come up with that strategic plan and to help guide the work for the next reimagining of where we're headed, and the commission's been around about 10, 11 years, so where will we go in the next 10, 11 years? And I'm looking at that. Then, as Dr. Brantley said, the 142 recommendations is actually what our six dimensions, which is how we open up our community committees, is we're viewing those 142 recommendations currently. So, over the years, we presented a lot. That first year, I think there was almost 100 recommendations with the commission to the city and the county, which we know is not feasible. It's a lot to undertake. So, our committees are going through those right now to kind of check in and see where we are with those policy recommendations over the years, consolidate if we need to, reword, look at those. And so, that's a really exciting opportunity. So, we can dwindle it down to something more manageable, and that is more targeted with where we're headed in the 2.0. I kind of just touched on this, but we're really excited to be expanding the membership of the committees and the commission. So, instead of just our amazing Commissioners, we have opened that up to community committee members. So, we are welcoming community committee members, people that want to get more involved in that advocacy policy work of women and girls, issues that face our community. Our six dimensions are health and development, education, economic security, employment and earnings, violence and safety, and a new committee this year is political equity. So, if there is any people that you come across in your work and in your community, please send them our way that if they're interested in getting more involved, we would love to have them on those committees. And then, really looking at, we're actually very excited about this, kind of coordinating all of our women and girls-serving organizations. And we don't have technically right now a comprehensive list of all those amazing women and girls-serving organizations in our community. And as Dr. Brantley talked about the intersectionalities, it's not just thinking about our big organizations that we know serve women and girls, but what are those organizations? They might have one program. They might be serving families. Families are women and girls. They have one program that focuses on mothers, maybe, but they might not identify themselves as a women and girls-serving organization, but they're doing some really amazing work. We want them at the table as well, to make sure we have everyone across all boards there to help us as we move into this 2.0 plan. And the big kind of undertaking as we head into ending of year one, going into year two, is the start of our well-being dashboard, and that was in the 2.0 plan. Factored around those six dimensions and looking at metrics and indexes that how are we in Tallahassee and Leon County measuring the well-being of what it's like to be a woman and girl in our community? And so, that's a really exciting undertaking that we're partnering with Rubin Ask You of Public Policy and their Lab for Social Justice and our amazing committees on. And I think it's just going to be something, first, we're going to be setting the tone for the state, which I think is an amazing opportunity for our city and our county, but also in the nation. There's not a lot of dashboards out there that truly look at that well-being for our women and girls. And, you know, with that continuum of care for the well-being, the women and girls-serving organizations, we're actually being, we're hosting an event for all of those amazing organizations coming up on February 15th. So, after you go to Dr. Judy's birthday party, you have Valentine's Day, then you come in to our amazing event, but we're hosting a coffee to really bring everyone to the table to start working on those metrics and indexes. And that's at nine o'clock, and we're going to be at Parkview at Cascades, but we would love to have everyone there. And if there's any questions about our top five priorities or anything from the last year's report, we'd be happy to take them. And we are just very thankful for the continued support over the years from the city. We wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be able to do what we do without your support, and we're just very thankful for it.
Excellent. Before I ask if we have any public comment, any questions, clarification? Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Any other questions? Action before us today is simply to accept the report as presented.
Move acceptance of the report as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Keep up the great work. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention that I am honored to serve as the commission's liaison to the commission, and certainly look forward to our work together as we move forward in this coming, this current year.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Excellent. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you very much.
Y'all so much.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, ma'am.
I've just confirmed that our newest school board member is, one of our newest school board members is in the audience. School board member Lori Cox, Representative District Four.
Well, School Board Member Cox, it's good to see you. Thanks for joining us. We appreciate you coming out. Absolutely. We're now on the consent agenda. 8.04 has been pulled. Have any other items been pulled from the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Mr. Clerk, any public comment? Do we need to pull anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are now on item 9.01. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, let me invite Tim Davis, our TNI Director for. This item is seeks your approval for the extension of contract 998549 for professional archival services for emails, text messages, and social media feeds with Smarsh Incorporated. As I mentioned, Tim Davis is our Director of TNI, and he can answer any questions on this item.
Excellent. Davis, great to see you, sir.
Good to see you as well.
Any further follow-up?
We're available for questions. This item was pulled for discussion.
Commissioner Matt Low, you were the Commissioner that pulled it.
Yes.
Who's yours?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for you before the discussion is, we talked previously about alternative messaging, co-working platforms like Slack and things like that that are utilized throughout the city. Are we capturing that in Smarsh, or are we capturing that somewhere else?
We're capturing that somewhere else.
Somewhere else, okay. So, when we do public records requests for digital communications, does that automatically include these third-party platforms, Mr. Clerk?
The actual request comes, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, the actual request comes in, and when they ask for any information as it relates to Slack, then that's what we end up providing.
Okay. Is it when they ask for Slack-specific items, or if they ask for all digital communications, do we automatically catalog Slack?
All digital communications.
Okay. That's my question on that. And then, my second question is, what's the purpose of Smarsh?
In terms of archiving?
Yes.
Email, texts, social media, it's to bring back for the public records aspect of it.
It's for the public records, to maintain the public records. In any record we produce from the city, the public owns it. It's a constitutional right of the city. So, in the city of Tallahassee, who has access to query Smarsh or look at the public records?
That is determined in terms of the legal team, city attorney, city attorney's office, also the city treasurer, as well as within TNI.
Okay. Madam Attorney, who has access to query Smarsh?
Madam Attorney, in your office, who has the access?
So, we utilize Smarsh for purposes usually of litigation. We may also, although we have an agreement we've signed that basically says that's what we will only use it for. So, if I have other questions that aren't related to public records, then I will contact the clerk's office and have the clerk run a search for me.
Okay.
So, in terms of who has access, my understanding is, as Mr. Davis has said, it is the clerk, clerk's office has access. I have access for litigation and legal purposes. And by knowledge only, the only other person would be someone in the TNI.
Okay. And Inspector General, so I was pointing out, you have access. Okay. And Inspector General as well, okay. So, everything in Smarsh is a public record. You know, many cities, you know, go as far as just putting public records on full display publicly where a request doesn't even need to come in, so we can limit the amount of staff work needed. I guess my concern is, I was recently informed, Mr. Treasurer Clerk, that a member of your staff, access to Smarsh was taken away. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And Mr. City Manager, why? Under what authority would the custodian of records have access denied to a member of staff?
Well, let me jump in real quick, because I have personally asked the Inspector General to look into this, and I think this is an ongoing audit that is being conducted. Commissioner Matt Low, maybe it'd be more appropriate to have the Inspector General bring back an item when he is done with the audit of Smarsh and give a full review. But I believe you are still, are you still in the middle of the audit right now?
I understand that an audit's taking place, but I also recognize concrete actions have taken place by management, and I'm trying to understand the precipitous of why, what's frankly, the public's record is completely public, you know, anyone would be denied, you know, access at all, but also the precipitous of this specific case. Mr. Manager?
Well, I also, thanks, before I turn it over to the manager, because I've had some talks, and I'm very nervous about going down this line of questioning, Mr. Inspector General, right now. I think it's important to note that nobody is being denied access to public records. Anybody can file a public record request 100%, and the city will fulfill it, no doubt about it. The question is, who actually has the access to perform those public records? For instance, Mr. Davis, we do not allow every single city employee to have access to Smarsh, correct?
Correct.
So, there are within the different appointed officials, offices, certain individuals for certain reasons that have that. Moving forward now with the question, Mr. Inspector General, should, what is your recommendation, since you have an active, an ongoing audit that's being prepared? If you'll please come to the podium in regards to the line of questioning. Is this appropriate? Should we continue, or would you like for us to wait till you bring something back?
At this time, there is an ongoing review of the past usage of the Smarsh system. And at this time, I can't report back on what the progress of our review is. So, that's the status of where we stand on the usage of Smarsh in my review.
Okay, Mr. Manager, in light of what the Inspector General said, you got a question proposed by Commissioner Matt Low. Any response?
Yes, sir. We have a response. The use of this tool, like other critical systems, is done with security access. I would estimate probably fewer than 10 people in the city government have access to it. Each access is for a specific purpose. Each user has an agreement that says what they can use it for.
For one second, can we pause right there on the specific purpose?
That's the answer to the question.
I want him to.
Let the manager answer, and then I'll come back to Commissioner Matt Low. Give you the floor.
Yeah, I'm laying the predicate for, it's a securitized system, no different than our police records would be or our utility records. It's a very, very limited security, and each user has a particular use.
Commissioner Matt Low, you have the floor.
Is there a policy that speaks to who has access that's adopted by the City Commission?
Could you repeat the question?
Is there a Smarsh policy on access and authority adopted by the City Commission?
No, this is not a City Commission policy item. Any other systems would not have a policy of that nature either. It's determined by the owner of the system, which is TNI, who should have security to prevent misuse of the system, but to ensure there's adequate access to the records.
Well, I agree with the mayor that if there was any concern at all, the Inspector General would be the appropriate place to take that, but it seems like unilateral action was taken. So, restating my question, I'm just trying to get, what was the reason access was taken away from a Treasurer Clerk's employee who is the custodian of records for the city of Tallahassee?
Well, I think that is a conversation to take place between the City Manager, the Treasurer Clerk, the Inspector General, while there is a current audit that's being performed right now. The item before us today is whether or not we are going to approve the contract to continue using the services of Smarsh. And then, we look forward to the audit that's coming back before us for discussion later. I understand the nature of the question is, should there be a policy in place determining who has access to Smarsh or not?
Well, let me rephrase. It's 100% pertains to this item, because I'm trying to ascertain from the manager who he is picking and choosing to have access to public records, which I feel should probably be housed in the Treasurer Clerk's office, based on the charter determining him to be the custodian of record. So, I can't vote on an item to renew a contract under the current policy if I'm not quite sure how the manager is implementing it, and I haven't heard an explanation today as to the reason. And if I could get a direct answer to my question, we can move forward.
Well, I'm going to ask the City Manager to use caution, since there, by advice of the Inspector General, and I'm looking at the attorney as well, since there is an active audit that's going on, and this will be reviewed later. Obviously, you take into consideration all the different variables on how you vote on a particular action, there is. I feel comfortable, since TNI reports directly through the City Manager to the manager, that under the current situation, that is how the contract is. Now, if we decide to move in a different direction, that is actually to be taken another day. But for the purposes of the agenda item before today is whether or not we're going to approve Smarsh.
But, Madam Attorney, I mean, is there anything in?
Mr. Commissioner Matt Low, let me come to Mayor Pro Tem for a question. You and I have dominated. I'll come back to you in just a second, okay? Mayor Pro Tem?
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Commissioner Matt Low, I understand the nature of your question, but having, being an IT experience, 30 years of IT experience, the question that we're asking today is about renewing the contract. If we do not renew the contract, then we have great risk of losing what we have if we don't renew this contract. Now, we can, I think it's, we can have the discussion, however you want to get your answer, get to have a discussion, but right now, we're talking about a procurement process that we need to make a decision on, that this conversation of who has access and all of, you know, who shot John can happen after we determine that we can move forward with the contracting that we need, because this is very important for us to not have exposure or risk to the archival system, because we don't have a contract in place. So, we really need to move forward with the contract and have this discussion outside of the contract. If we could just do that, is what I'm asking.
Commissioner Matt Low?
Just to clarify, whether there's an ongoing Inspector General investigation, which there may be, I don't believe he's investigating the decision made by the City Manager. I think he's looking at the access more broadly. You know, none of that trumps a Commissioner's prerogative to get information from our appointed officials. That's why my question was direct. I understand that there's a refusal to answer that, so I believe it be, but I will be very clear. Our charter clearly delineates the authority of each appointed official, and when we start to get outside of our lanes, it gets very, very concerning, especially where public records are concerned, because they should have access, everyone in the public should have access to all of them. They shouldn't be concentrated just in one management office when it's clearly stated that public records are the dominion and domain of the Treasurer Clerk. So, I was shocked to hear that. I hope those types of things don't continue, and I look forward to seeing the results of the Inspector General investigation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There we go. Is there a motion on the table? Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
We do have one speaker, Mayor.
Okay, great.
That is Margaret Moore. And as the first speaker of the year, I will announce that our rules have not changed. Each speaker will have three minutes for comments, speak from the podium there in the middle where Mr. Davis was. There's a light that's in front of the Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem that'll start off green and ultimately turn yellow, and when it's red, your time will be expired.
Wonderful. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Margaret Moore. I live at 1910 Monticello Drive. I had no idea this was an item, so thank you for pulling this from the consent agenda so that we can have a robust discussion about this. Y'all authorized that the capture of text messages would further expand the agreement to include Microsoft Teams and Blueprint, the BPIA. And I do understand that they have their own contract with Smarsh and their own way of doing things and their own staff. I would like to see actually more captured. I wonder if Smarsh can capture calendars, lobbyist meetings, for example. I made a public records request. I made a public records request for a calendar once, and I had to spend $80 for it. And I find that to be a hindrance to obtaining public records, and if I had known perhaps... Oh, and another thing, this is offhand. It's to my understanding that when a public records request is made, it is on the elected official to decide what is public business and what is not, and then they submit. But does Smarsh capture everything? And when I make a public records request, can I make it from Smarsh? Or can I, I mean, do I have to, you know, rely upon self-reporting and pay $80 for someone to photograph a calendar? But I'll leave it to you. I would like to see Blueprint included. I am disappointed to see that the city attorney's opinion does not extend ethics to cover city commissioners when they sit at the table at Blueprint, and it makes it difficult. It makes it hard to follow along. It makes it hard to know who to go to for what. You're all the same people, and you wouldn't be serving on any of those boards if you weren't city commissioners. I would like to see, I'd like to see it included, and I'd like to understand why, despite your direction being given, it did not go in that direction. Thank you.
Sure. I think that's a viable question. Madam Attorney, do you want to speak to the nature of Blueprint being a separate governmental entity, therefore that's why it's not part of the city's public records request, but you have to, it's no different than if you were looking for county records, you'd have to file with the county commission?
That's correct, Mayor. They are separate legal entities, and we do have sometime, we have contracts with Blueprint that we perform their record searches for them, and I think, really, it's just a matter of negotiating with Blueprint to get to that point.
Yeah, Blueprint is up on the Smarsh, but up on a separate contract.
Correct. All right. Any other public comment, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
All right. We'll acceptance of staff recommendations. Staff recommendation has been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. We appreciate it. We're on policy formation and direction. Item number 12.01. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me invite Devin Levens and Laurel Harvin to come forward. As you know, you heard a lengthy presentation. There was a fantastic discussion at your meeting, your retreat meeting earlier today, and at that time, we talked about certain action items that were recommended on tonight's agenda. We're at that point. I think it would be productive for the benefit of those in the audience that didn't hear that earlier presentation, and those that are watching at home, for Devin to hit the high points with the actions that we're asking you to adopt relative to the South Side Action Plan, or to adopt the South Side Action Plan, and to initiate amendments to the Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan to update goals, objectives, and policies related to what we now know as the South Side Action Plan. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'll ask Devin to hit the high points, and we're certainly available for questions.
You did a great job, wonderful presentation this morning, and thank you for being here again with us today.
Billy, can we get the presentation pulled up? I'm going to try to hit the hot notes, so we don't have to keep it as long as it was this morning. All right. Let's jump into it. So, we got the three phases of action we talked about earlier today. Those first two phases have been complete, the community engagement and the community feedback, and we're now with the finalized web plan in the Phase Three action. Let's jump straight into how that action works, since we've talked about the engagement part this morning. Let's really jump into what we're looking at here. And what we're looking at is the South Side Action Plan. The way that we looked at this was, let's go to the community, hear from the community, find out what the community wants, use that information to inform how we look at the comprehensive plan, and then how we put that into the strategic plan for implementation. From that, get the projects that we're going to use to move forward to actually make the action projects happen. And those projects are going to be public, private, and community-driven projects. Can you advance this slide for me? So, a little bit more detail than what we had this morning on this part, just so it's clear. Comprehensive plan updates. What we're looking to do is replace the Southern Strategy with South Side Action Plan, delete that outdated and aspirational text that doesn't support action, create new objectives that reflect the community priorities of beautification, investment, and the engagement of active citizens, and create policies that are actionable and measurable. One thing to note here is, tonight, if you make this action to move forward, you can do that without the county being on board. You can do it as the city commission, so just know that as we move forward, and I'll hit that again. The strategic plan integration, how does this go into the strategic plan? Again, we talked about a one plus one plus five. You had an update this morning at the retreat. You would get another two years of updates, and then we'd have whatever we determine to be those indicators that we would track moving forward, would go into the strategic plan for the next five years, so we'd have five years of indicators that we're able to track in the South Side. This is all about action, and action is going to be projects for us. We want to see projects, we want to see happening, things on the ground. Those can be community events, so the South Side, things like that that the community's doing. We want to see more public projects. We don't want to slow any of those down. You see half a billion dollars right there that we've already invested over the last five years. We want to keep that moving, because that's going to help us do the smaller projects, because that investment's already in place. Start having those sidewalks and sewers there, that's going to allow us to get some of the more small projects in. And then private projects, we talked about some of the affordable housing, infill housing, those are things that we're going to see from this as well. Again, it takes the whole city. We can't do this in silos. We all have to be working together across our departments, and this is just a quick snapshot of some of those things that we're seeing in the South Side that are happening, our tempo program, housing, farmer's market, and a lot of this already aligns with what we're seeing in the strategic plan, so we think marrying those two together is going to be the way to move this forward. With that, the timeline for this commission is, today you had an update this morning, you're getting, tonight, we're asking for, the two recommendations is to adopt the South Side Action Plan, and then to initiate the comprehensive plan amendment. We will continue doing the South Side Action Plan projects, and in the spring of this year, this is where we would jump right into that comp plan cycle. The cycle is already open. We are going to have a joint work, or joint public policy workshop for the comp plan itself, sorry. So, this would go right into that cycle that's already happening. We've already done the workshops by going to the community, talking to the community, so we're able to get right into the cycle, so this would come back before the joint commissions. But you, again, you all can initiate this as the city commission when it comes to those joint meetings. And then, your next update, official update, would be the targets that we've identified for strategic plan, to update you at next year's annual retreat. And with that, it's, we're asking you to adopt the South Side Action Plan, and then to initiate the comp plan.
Excellent. Thank you so much again for the recap presentation. You and your team have done a tremendous job. I would certainly appreciate it. Mr. Clerk, walk us through public comment, please.
Mayor, we have several speakers on this item. I, at present, I have four, all in person, none virtual on this particular item, so the first speaker will be Stanley Sims, followed by Donna Pearl Cotterell.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. Happy New Year to all of you. My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. And, Mr. Mayor, I want to say Devin has the right personality to implement this plan, because Devin can work with people like me, as well as people like Judy Mandrelo. He gets things done. This is very good work. But here's something that I want to go back to the conversation that we had in the budget And Commissioner Porter, everyone kept under, in my interpretation of the dialogue, which was robust, which I think is quite needed and productive, because it has to be hashed out, so we can learn each one's perspective. And that perspective should not be viewed as a negative derogatory of not knowledgeable or not sensible enough, or not completely understanding the aspect, but just see it from a different aspect. When Commissioner Porter was saying more, you know what I thought more was? Betty Scott. Sweet black lady. That's more. Wasn't like me. Treated everybody nice. Didn't have much, but she shared. She loved the Providence community so much. She couldn't afford the rent, but she didn't bother nobody. She just made a tent up under the bridge. That's my more for the South Side. I didn't build my house on the South Side. Her did. Because of people like Commissioner Richardson. My mama moved out of Texas Street. But more helps Betty Scott. That's more.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next, Donna Pearl Cotterell, and then Mike Goldstein.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My pleasure. My name is Donna Pearl Cotterell. I live on the South Side, and I did attend the retreat. Unfortunately, we couldn't speak there. I'm going to try to keep it to three minutes. Got a lot of notes, because the plan itself was taken from the 1998 Southern Strategy. And there were some things that were struck from that plan, and as bad as the name sounds, there were actually some commendable goals in the Southern Strategy Plan. So, there's some that I'd like to ask staff and you commissioners to go back and look at, and perhaps maybe add some things back in. And also, for the February 7th, 2023, if we get to that planning, local planning meeting, can we see to it that the outreach is equitable and fair, especially to the folks who live on the South Side, and it can be done during the date, I mean, time where it's accessible for those who work? For the Goal 11L, taken from the Southern Strategy, I'd ask that you take a look at that. There was some really good stuff in there. I won't repeat it, but Goal 11.1, 11.11, 11.11L, and then a Goal 11L as well, if we could look at those, perhaps think about putting those back in. Policy 11.1.2, and this is all from the Southern Strategy, Goals 11.2, and then 11.3.1, perhaps a slight change where it says citizens, perhaps residents, encouraging residents through outreach to promote those projects and empower the residents, and connect efforts with resources. The language in 11.5L perhaps should be added back in, 11.5.1L, A, B, and C, E, D, and E. I would ask staff why this was struck from the Southern Strategy Plan. The intent is to provide direct quality development and redevelopment into the area designated, and this success will benefit the entire community. Those are simple things that were taken out, but if they were added back in, would help to enhance the plan.
You have about 15 seconds.
Okay. Because it talks about the quality of life, shopping, recreation, educational opportunities. Those things were taken out of the plan. I'd like to have folks to revisit that, and perhaps add some of that language back in, as well as Policy 1.2.4. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next is Mike Goldstein, and then Michael McLaughlin.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. So, Mike Goldstein, 217 West Second Avenue, 1043233. Happy New Year, y'all. Been a couple months I've been back up here. Just want to say, with the South Side Plan, I love South Side. It's great to be there, a little work and play. Early's Kitchen, they're expanding, that's awesome. Borough Square Art District, and all this lovely stuff is over there. Great things to be a part of, to see, and to just experience year-round, but then there's the other parts of the things we don't talk about, like the negative aspect of gentrification, the fact that Point and Stills has an area that's still there that's being outshined by student housing development by the new skate park. How do we save history when we keep overdeveloping with things that overshadow what's still there and losing every time that we don't know what's right in people's backyards? That's one thing to keep in mind as well, and how do we just, Smokey Hollow was a great prededication a couple years ago, but what do we do when things like that were just show and tell, but not really remember and reflect? Because it seems like that's a recurring theme with when we have developments come in and overshine what's still not remembered. With that being said, the other part of it is, congrats to your recent appointment to the CRA over there. I hope he grows to see the genuine nature, not just for his own self-interest of what's right there, that helped with Representative Cox's part as well. Some of Wall's has potential, but the person behind it might have some personal self-interest that might not be looked at from in front of people, and behind the scenes, we don't know what that looks like going forward. But how do we keep people separate from what's actually guiding the forces in front of them without appreciating what South Side has to offer year-round? Because we need to get, like Anita Plaza, to utilize more for just South Side's festival, and that'd be nice to have that utilized more for events than just once a year that's in Cascade Park's backyard as well. So, how do we keep the area that goes from where most students hang out at, to really appreciate for the tours and things that are not just once, twice, three times a year? So, what does that look like on a plan, and what does that mean for us going forward to actually appreciate history that's simply being erased by gentrification and development that we can't seem to catch up to? That's just some things to consider when you have a whole plan for South Side that most of us don't even know about until it's too late, because it keeps happening again, again, and again, with these student housing projects, these hotels, these developments that we cannot keep up with, because we don't work and play here enough to know how to combat what we don't even understand half the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Michael McLaughlin, and then that's the final speaker on this item.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Michael McLaughlin. I live at 100 Cote Street. I believe I wanted to speak on the Brownfields development. Should I speak now? Do you want me to come back in a few?
No, we'll come back, we'll get you.
Apologies. We'll call you on 1200.
Be back.
Yeah, no worries. Sorry about that. We have any other public comment?
No, sir, not on this item.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem, I'm coming to you. For, as our leader on the South Side Action Plan, you and Commissioner Richardson have done tremendous work to get us to where we are. Comments?
I move acceptance of the staff recommendation to adopt the South Side Action Plan, and to initiate the amendments to make those changes that are necessary to move forward.
Excellent. So, motion's been made for staff recommendation by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Let me just say, I know one of the speakers made some great points about some of the things that we're taking out. We had a very robust discussion earlier today about how many times the things that might have been taken out of one part of the comprehensive plan were actually referenced in another part of the comprehensive plan, in order to streamline. It has not been actually taken out of the plan as much as we are making the document more of a workable, readable, livable document. However, I'm going to ask staff to please make yourself available if there are specific questions that were brought up about why something was removed or changed, so that we can, we can, we can have those answers provided as well.
And if I, if I could, on that, on that point, also remember that this is also going to be a part of our strategic plan. And in our strategic plan, there are already some overarching things, such as the quality of life, and some of the other things that were listed there, that would, overarching, not just South Side Action Plan, but all plans. So, we want to make sure that we understand that that's to be included, that it is included already as well.
Motion for staff recommendation is made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Porter.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, again, want to commend the team, Devin, all of you, for the community outreach. I still think it's really impressive, and more than I've ever seen us do in my brief time at the city. I'm not going to rehash my comments from the retreat. My only comment now is just, I think sometimes there's, the conversation was conflated a little bit between the comprehensive plan and like just the South Side Action Plan, as far as what's included there and what language. Because I agree, the comprehensive plan has a particular focus and purpose legally, and for our planning purposes from the plan itself. I know it may seem trivial, and it may seem crazy that I'm asking, but I really would love if we could just have something out like that. I mean, I've been looking at the website, and it's amazing, but I still don't feel like I actually understand what the plan is that we're approving. That being said, I know it's going to be great. I know it already is great, and I'm ready to... it already is great, and I'm ready to move forward as well.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, Devin, thank you for your good work. We know there's been a lot of community engagement, and some people probably are finding out about it today. That's the nature of probably everything we do. I did just want to point out, and if you don't mind, we're initiating the comprehensive plan amendment today to start the process. Could you speak to a little bit about future opportunities to engage in that process before adoption?
Can we pull the presentation back? Can we pull the presentation back up, please? So the spring 2023 dates, those are going to be the points where we're going to have the hearings, transmittal hearings. So the February 7th and March 7th are going to be the two next points where you would want to come out and be at those hearings if you wanted to talk.
Yeah, that's perfect. And thank you for putting those back up. I just wanted to make the point that this isn't final adoption today. There is still, is an extensive process to ever update the conplan. So there are further opportunities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. All those in favor of the motion on the table that was made by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson for staff recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Great job, team. Great job. We're on item number 12.02. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval to award a construction contract that will provide necessary, the necessary roadway infrastructure and site work to align the airport's access with the new work that's underway at Capital Circle. Additionally, this new roadway will facilitate the access for the development of the planned rental car facility. There were three bids received. Staff was recommending approval of the construction contract award along with a seven and a half percent contingency to M of Tallahassee. David Pollard, our Airport Director, is here to answer any questions you have on this item.
Excellent. All right. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
Not on 12.02, no, sir.
All right. I'm looking for.
Move staff recommendation for option number one.
Second.
All right. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. David, really excited about what's going on at the airport. Keep up.
Thank you, Mayor, and I certainly appreciate the great support. Thank you.
All right. We're on item number 12.03. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Let me invite Alyssa Myers. She's our Director of Environmental Services toward, and this is to present an update on our Brownfields program and seek your authorization to begin the process of expanding our Brownfields area by designating a portion of the Lake Bradford Road, Spring Hill Road area as a state Brownfields area. The significance of this is the new proposed designation lays the framework for future grant awards and promotes environmental stewardship while enabling property owners to take advantage of numerous federal and state government incentives. I think it puts us in the right posture to be ready for that and to seek that. Alyssa will give us a little bit of overview and kind of orient us to the area.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, Commissioners. Happy to be here today to give you a brief update on our Brownfields program and all the good work that we're doing and suggested next steps. With your approval of options one through three, you will be laying the groundwork for future grant opportunities in our community, additional economic development, and opportunities for environmental stewardship. So before I get ahead of myself, just want to give a little bit of background about what a brownfield is and the designation process. So a brownfield is real property. The redevelopment, reuse, or expansion of that property is complicated by actual pollution or contamination or perceived. So a brownfield is not necessarily a contaminated or polluted property, but there's a perception, and that gives people pause to take a chance on that. So the Brownfields Redevelopment Act was enacted by the legislature in 1997, and it was to incentivize local governments and property owners to take chances on properties like these, clean them up, and redevelop them for economic benefit. Once a brownfield area is designated through resolution by the city, a property owner can then enter into a brownfield site rehabilitation agreement, also known as a BISRA, with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And it's a voluntary agreement where they say, hey, we're going to assess it and clean it up and redevelop it. And then they have all of these tax refunds, tax credits, liability protection that they get. So the first step is with the city through resolution. So a little bit about our Brownfields program, you know, I've, this has started long before me. We've had $3.6 million in funding since our program inception in 1997. We are an example to cities around the Southeast of a successful program. Last year alone, we received $900,000 in funding. We got a EPA half a million dollar community-wide assessment plan. We also got a $400,000 DEP targeted brownfield assessment, which allows for assessment and remediation at the former Rose Printing property, which was also the former Dale Mabry Army Airfield Site. We also have additional funding from our expired EPA revolving loan fund grant, which is expired. So it's now post-grant income that can be used for additional assessment, community-wide planning, and activities like that associated with Brownfields. And just to take a moment, one of my staff who does all of our technical reviews, Shireen Vashtamasetti is here, and we really couldn't do it without him. So we are working, next steps are the Community Involvement Plan for the EPA Assessment Grant, and we're going to be having a kickoff meeting, and there'll be more details on that shortly. So benefits for brownfield designation. I mean, it benefits the community. It's a win-win for everybody. You get a job creation, an increased tax base, preservation of green space, because you're reutilizing existing infrastructure, and you're promoting environmental cleanup. So the city has two city-initiated large-scale brownfield sites that are shown. The first one was the Gain Street Corridor. The one in pink was designated in 2016. That's the South Monroe Street Brownfields area. So we're looking to expand our designation on the western side of the Gain Street Corridor to commercial and industrial properties headed south along generally Lake Bradford Road, Spring Hill, to Capital Circle. And you can see it a little better on this next slide. Again, these are not exact boundaries. We're going to be seeking public input before we come up with an exact proposal. So there'll be multiple opportunities. So the proposed area generally is in green. The designation process is by city resolution again, and it's governed by Chapter 166 Florida statutes and the Florida Brownfields Redevelopment Act in 376. There's multiple public hearings. There's community meetings. There's multiple opportunities at feedback. The other important thing to know is that owners do have the opportunity to opt out. So if they say, hey, I don't want my property to be a brownfield. I don't want to be in on this, we can cut them out of it, and they don't have to be in it. So really, this effort is in line with a lot of what you all talked about today. It's in line with the strategic plan initiatives, and also it complements Blueprint's Airport Gateway Project. Just to give brief summary of the incentives, once you have a designated brownfield and folks enter into a BISRA with the state, you see they have liability protection. They have DEP expedited technical review. There's multiple tax credits. There's additional credits for affordable housing and medical facilities, along with sales tax for building materials. So I think it's a win-win for our community. I recommend moving forward with adoption of options one through three.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, sir. Michael McLaughlin, and that's the only speaker on this particular item.
All right. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Michael McLaughlin. I live at 100 Cade Street, and I have some questions about the proposed Brownfields redevelopment. While this proposal sounds really great, at least on paper, I am concerned that this redevelopment may simply be another example of environmental gentrification. I'm wondering if the city staff or commissioners might allay my concerns by describing specific policies you may have in place or may be thinking of putting in place to ensure that the economic benefits of any redevelopment along this corridor are reaped primarily by the people who actually live in the adjacent neighborhoods. Numerous scholars have found that while Brownfields, Brownfield projects resolve environmental harms, they also reproduce racial inequities. Jonathan Ahsoka found that widespread displacement occurs in conjunction with Brownfield projects. Richard Melstrom and Rose Mohammedy found that black residents are less likely to stay and thus more likely to be displaced compared to white residents after Brownfield projects. Marisol Becerra found that between 2006 and 2015, wealthier white populations are more likely to benefit. Melstrom et al. found that owners, owners, not renters, owners appear to benefit more than renters from cleanup and development. And so this raises a few questions for me. Given that the majority of residents in the neighborhoods adjacent to the Lake Bradford, Spring Hill corridor are black people who are renters, how will the city ensure that these residents are not displaced by increases in rent brought about by the increases in property values of properties that they rent but do not own? Additionally, I went to the Leon County Property Appraisers website to look at who owns the properties along the corridor. And while I only had time to look at properties north of Orange Avenue, I found that many, perhaps most of these properties are owned by people or corporations who do not live on the South Side. And so I'm wondering, will the benefits of this redevelopment merely go to people who own property along Lake Bradford but live in areas like the Piney Zee or Summerbrook neighborhoods? Is designating this corridor as a brownfield site an honest effort to improve the environmental health of the adjacent South Side neighborhoods, or is it simply a part of a larger strategy to gentrify the drive to the airport? The Tallahassee Community Action Committee believes that everyone has the right to live in an environment that promotes well-being, and cleaning up contaminated sites along Lake Bradford, Spring Hill will certainly contribute to a healthier environment. But who will be able to afford to live there? Who will benefit the most from this cleanup?
You're right. 30 seconds.
Too much redevelopment in Tallahassee winds up benefiting those who already have a lot of wealth and harms those who are economically marginalized. It's only fair and just that any redevelopment primarily benefits the people who live and work along the Lake Bradford, Spring Hill corridor. As Dr. Mandrell said earlier today, we need to be intentional about making change. And so I ask you, what specific policies will the solid city implement to ensure that black people who rent homes along this corridor will benefit the most from any redevelopment? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
No other speakers on this item.
All right. Colleagues.
Move staff recommendation items, options one, two, and three.
Second. Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Discussion. Mayor Pro Tim.
Well, I wasn't able to understand all that Speaker was saying, but Alyssa, I'm sure Mr. and Mrs. City Manager, can she?
Well, let me ask. I'm not sure if Alyssa's the right person. I think maybe Karen could answer a little bit. And, you know, it was a broad statement, but I think the question is, my response would be, the land use and zoning rights that exist today for those properties are unchanged in this effort. It doesn't create any change of the ability of the owner to take action, but of course, it provides access to cleanup and other things that Alyssa talked about. I think that's the general answer. Karen can confirm for me.
Yes, City Manager, you're exactly right. None of that is changed by this action. This just makes the, this process, if approved, would make these properties eligible for a number of positive incentives, but it wouldn't change any of the underlying land use and zoning.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
And Karen, this also ensures the health and safety of those individuals who are living on these contaminated properties.
Yes, that's absolutely correct, that it would clean up properties that are problematic from an environmental and a public health standpoint.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm happy to support this item. And correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, I know we're not going to engage in a discussion here, but I think what the Speaker might have been getting at, and you tell me what your take on this, is that because there is a benefit to participating in this program, property owners, their property might become more valuable because there isn't the contamination. And so if their property becomes more valuable, they can sell it, they can, you know, and so that is a concern that can happen. And hopefully, those are things that we can mitigate through our, you know, our housing. I'm not sure exactly, you know, that's something to look into, what we can do as we move forward. But I agree, the health benefit and need, you know, is most important here. So do you have any comment on that?
No, I agree on that. And I would say that, as Alyssa mentioned, there's ample opportunity for us to work with any citizen who has concerns to talk through these issues in more detail and share what mitigation measures there would be.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Motion's been made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 12.04. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Let me invite Henry Gaynor Ford. He, Henry is the Assistant General Manager of our Electric and Gas Utility in charge of our energy supply. And before I introduce the item, I would like to recognize Henry and his team. While we were, most of us warm in our homes during the deep freeze during the Christmas weekend, Henry and his team worked tirelessly for about three days keeping the power on. And that was no easy task. They made it look easy, and I would like to thank Henry and everybody that was involved for doing that. And this item is aligned with it. This is a maintenance item. We've got a variety of units on our system, one in particular that has reached its major maintenance cycle at 18,000 hours, and we're seeking your approval to spend $1.75 million to buy replacement cylinder heads, cylinder liners, and a variety of other parts for that unit. Henry can answer any detailed questions you have on this, and we ask for your approval.
Excellent. First of all, any questions? All right. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
All right. Going back, Commissioner Porter.
I'd make the motion for staff recommendation.
Okay.
If we're at that point. I also have a comment.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Commissioner Porter for staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Porter for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too just wanted to say how grateful I am on behalf of the residents for the work that you do, your department does. And, you know, I was in Clemson, South Carolina for the holidays, and our power did go out. And I think it was a planned outage because of how much usage there was. And I know that's something we've discussed before, and I'm just so impressed constantly with our utilities, with our foresight and planning, so that we don't have to do that, you know, when people are cold. I mean, it was just unthinkable that people would be without power, even for such a short amount of time. So I really, really appreciate your work. It's so important and oftentimes just overlooked because we take it for granted. So thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yep. All right. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 12.05. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. This item requests a linear infrastructure variance, often referred to as an LIV for Phase One of the Northeast Gateway Project. The LIV process is authorized by our city land development code and comprehensive plan for infrastructure projects and provides flexibility in meeting certain code requirements in recognition of the fact that infrastructure projects by design are unique and don't fit a typical footprint. The request, in front of you, we recommend the approval of option one, is to allow a roadway to cross an area of approximately 5.8 acres that is designated as wetlands and flood plain. In exchange, mitigation would be provided in the form of a perpetual conservation easement for an area no less than 5.8 acres. John Reddick is our Director of Growth Management. He's on point on this issue and I believe has a few comments to also share.
Mr. Reddick, thank you for joining us, sir.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As the managers stated, this is a process that the comprehensive plan and our land development code lays out, just the recognition that for linear infrastructure like roadways and water and sewer, it can't stay confined like you can with a specific site project. So for this first phase of the Northeast Gateway, I'll go to a slide here to show the vicinity of it. This is just east of the Canopy Development. And this is a segment that leaves us with the routing of this, no alternative but to cross this area. So what has been provided to us in coordination with Blueprint is the narrowest portion of this, which is the least area of impact that crossing would have. And this is something that is coordinated both with staff within the city. And this is something that is coordinated both with staff within the city and also with our senior biologist and DEP. This will also require a permit from DEP, which Blueprint has applied for to get their approval. And they may require mitigation as well, but they oftentimes refer to us because our, our standards are often more stringent. So with this coordinated effort, this, our, our recommendation is approved option. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have one speaker on this item. It's our only participant virtually, Max Epstein.
Mr. Epstein, are you with us?
Hello? Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Your name and address for the record, please. The clerk will let you in when you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. It's Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Road. I have a simple request, which is to deny this today and bring it back to the March Blueprint meeting for a further explanation of why this is required and all of the other iterations that the city and Blueprint went through, because there's not a whole lot of information here. It seems to me they could just build a larger bridge. If you remember, we suggested maybe rerouting Wallani to go over the wetlands to the east, building a large bridge to minimize the impact to the conservation easement up top. Remember that you're unilaterally giving a variance here, and it's a little troubling that the city commission can do this because this wetland has been there forever, before people got there. And it would have been easy enough to design the road to go south of Dove Pond and avoid all of this. But Blueprint is supposed to be our agency that does the impossible, the best environmental, the best development that we can do. The addition, the mitigation of nine extra acres is, is excellent, and there, I have other questions. To the east side, the map that you have says that there's going to be an FDEP exchange of lands. What does that mean? Does that mean that's going to be conservation? Are we going to get more, are we going to have to give up something for it? We're moving in the right direction, but when these large developments come through, we are promised that conservation and preservation, which is what this is, a preservation area, will be protected. This could have been planned for from the beginning, and it seems to me that there are other ways to not impact this nearly as much. You have to meet a very, you know, a legal standard when you give this. Do you have enough information? I would like to see what the other options were. Can we build a larger bridge? You know, is there a way to lessen the impact here because this is a preservation area? There's also not mitigation for the creation of more wetlands like was required for Dove Pond further to the south. There are extra wetlands that were created for it. This is the perfect project for Blueprint because it is a Blueprint project. I also find it concerning that the city manager or the city commission can grant an environmental variance without going through the board. I'm not sure if there are other municipalities that do this. I haven't been able to find it, but we should be holding ourselves, the government, to a higher standard. So, you know, I didn't see enough information in this presented to you. I haven't seen alternatives. Can you just build a lo, a longer bridge? Is it, is it money? Is it that we can't actually do that? So that is my request. I hope that you bring this back, deny it today, bring it back to your March meeting, and then you can decide to pass it after that. I think the people need an explanation of why this preservation area is going to be impacted, one-third of it.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein.
Is going to be impacted.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein.
Okay, is that it? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, I believe our next speaker's on the next item. That's the last item, that's the last speaker on 1205.
All right, comments, questions?
Move staff recommendation, option number one. Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Porter for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, Mr. Reddick, if you have any comments regarding the Speaker.
Sure, and I think that one of the first questions that is asked among staff is if a bridge is an alternative here. And I would point out that for the Phase Two, what we're calling it north of I-10 for the Northeast Gateway, there will be a, a wetland crossing there where a bridge is appropriate by design to, to be the least impactful alternative. In this case, in our coordination with Blueprint, it, from an engineering standpoint with the elevation of the roadway, in constructing a bridge, the requirements that would go into feasibly constructing it and meeting design standards, the construction activity that it takes to actually implement that causes more damage than would, you know, would be required by doing this alternative, which is a series of box culverts, which allows for the hydraulic flow to be maintained. So there was a consideration here and for, for bridging it, but it was determined that that would actually be more impactful.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to oppose this item because I just don't think we should be filling in six acres of unaltered wetlands. I think the time for this conversation was when the Northeast Gateway was being discussed. This wetland was always going to be at issue, and before we go so far down the path where we're funding an $80 million roadway, we should be having these very important conversations about, you know, what's going to be impacted. I don't believe the Northeast Gateway is the most effective use of taxpayer dollars to mitigate traffic. So I think there are a myriad of alternatives that could both protect this, this wetland and serve the public, but, so, no matter what, I'm opposed to it. So, but my next point I was going to ask, and Madam Attorney, I assume you haven't had a chance to, Ms. Randy Dinkler sent us an email today with a bunch of legal statements on what she felt was the process. I assume you haven't had a chance to review that or, or look for an opinion. Knowing that I'm going to vote against it no matter what, I would ask this board to look at those and get a legal opinion based on what was sent to us before taking official action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comment? I remembered this blueprint meeting. It was one of the ones that went hours and hours and hours when we were discussing these options. Am I correct, Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
And this was the one that was decided by Blueprint to be the least intrusive, along with the preservation and swap. I do believe it was Commissioner Welsh that proposed the bridge. That was one of the other options, and it was determined to be more intrusive than what we have before us today. I'm going to support the motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye.
Passes three two with Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Matlow in dissent. We are on item number 12.06. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves the designation of responsibility and authority to the city manager for a variety of management, operation, and security of city facilities. The departments under the city manager's direction, including TNI, which is Technology and Innovation Facilities and Security, report to the city manager, and this seeks your confirmation. I recommend option one, that the city manager's responsibility and authority is over all aspects of building management and security for all offices within the city facilities.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do have Margaret Moore to speak on this item and Stanley Sims as well. So Margaret Moore and then Stanley Sims.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Margaret Moore, 1910 Monticello Drive. I'm very concerned about this item. I feel like our city manager has so many responsibilities and duties, and it's really not fair to, you know, put it all on one person right here. That's our hierarchy. The citizens on the top, and it's the commissioners who are elected to represent us, there to direct the staff to fulfill the voters' wishes as best as possible, I understand. However, in the case of extending authorization over the city hall, I'm concerned over the one statement here that it confirms individual commissioners do not have this responsibility or authority. I'm concerned about that because it puts a lot of power in one person's hands, and although it's in the name of safety, I've also seen safety diminished here. Where did the, the metal detectors go? You know, I felt much safer coming in with those, actually. Also, the increased presence of officers, it feels intimidating to me as a, as a citizen. I don't look to them as protectors of me. I took a picture at the last meeting. One of the officer CD behind me, he had his finger in his trigger. I know it was a taser and they're classified differently, but when someone's got their finger on the trigger and they're looking to use it, I feel like excuses are going to be made to allow that kind of thing to happen. And I felt very pressured. I feel very pressured. I don't like speaking out. I know, that sounds crazy. But I feel less safe under this authority. I would feel more safe if you all had more control, maybe perhaps to override certain things, you have, should have control over your own space. And I believe city hall's our building. This is where we conduct public business, and to deny access to certain individuals, I don't know how to make a public records request to find out what's going on about that. So I would like to know more. I do a lot of searching on the websites. I see a lot of congratulations for transparency and the ease with which citizens can interact with their elected leaders and have some ability to navigate our budget. I have found it to be quite the opposite, and I would just like to allow our elected leaders to have the ability to control their own environment, because I feel like it's going to slowly eat away at all of our attendance. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Your name and address for the record.
My name is Stanley Sims. I think that this change should be called the Stanley Sims Change. Here's what concerned me. I'm studying Commissioner Matlow, this book that one of my mentors gave me called Emotional Intelligence. And so I, in order to achieve that, let's look at this. Here's my issue of concern, Mayor. Everyone except our constitutional, our elected officials, our current charter prohibits you guys from dealing with city staff matters, and I understand that. But what this does is, this gives the city manager home ownership rights of this building. Now, it's not a governmental secret. I'm not on, on, on the city manager's wish list for happy birthday parties, and he's not on mine. But I'm praying in this 2023 year that we can respect each other in our positional, position. But I believe that City Commissioner Curtis Richardson knows we get upset with one another every now and then. He knows my heart. He knows I'm not coming in here with an AR-57 and shoot everyone. That's why it's been very challenging for you to keep me out of this building. Yeah, you smile now, but I don't view that funny when it's my democracy, especially when you stand in Cascade during MLK, talking about democracy. This arose, your power as elected officials to meet citizens in the People's House City Hall. Now, if this was Mr. Reese Gold's nice house, where he got that gated off, he has the right to tell me not to come to his house. That is his right as a, but it's, I contribute to the upkeep of this. I'm not a refugee. I'm a taxpaying citizen. Not only that, my wife works in this building. Despite what you think, she loves me. I don't bring my wife flowers anymore. I can't. When I mess up around the house, can't come up and get $20 from my house like, you know, we always do. That's my democracy. It hurts me that even when a elected official says, you're not a threat to me, come to my office, we take these extreme measures to keep me out of this building. But I told you of every situation in which I did to contact Deputy City City Manager about a very serious...
You're at three minutes.
Situation.
Thank you.
And you have not responded to that. And I'm asking City Manager, I'm going to stop, I'm just finishing my thought. Before you pass this, can you please address to these city commissioners, will you allow Ms. Cynthia Barber to speak to me about that crucial issue regarding the chief?
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That's the last speaker on this item.
All right. Commission action. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll kick this off because I think I'm probably the precipitous to this item being, being generated. I was, I was contacted by a constituent who felt that he was unfairly being prohibited access to city hall. I had met with this individual at city hall multiple times over my time in elective office. I did not feel him to be a physical threat in any means, so I invited him to my office to hear his concerns, as I would do for any constituent that reaches out and wants to speak with their elected official about something that they feel is concerning that's happening in, in city government. It was my understanding at, at that time that, that the individual was told that if he did come on to city hall premises outside of a publicly noticed meeting, that he would be arrested. At that point, I, I did the responsible thing, and I looked to our city attorney for guidance. I, you know, I did not want to risk someone being, you know, arrested simply for trying to meet with their, their elected official. And, and looking at the apparent authority of the, the city manager or, and the authority of a city commissioner, there was nothing that explicitly gave the city manager authority to deny access to a constituent seeking to meet with, with their elected officials. So that where, that's where the meeting stood, and I felt like we were able to legally proceed and, and have this meeting at, at the advice of, of our city attorney. Unfortunately, I was told the day of the meeting, irregardless of an attorney saying if arrest took place, it could be grounds for a false arrest, that, that it was said that this individual should be arrested anyway if he, if he, if he comes, comes to city hall. So I abruptly canceled that meeting, and in response to the city attorney's opinion on this, I actually got an email that directed to the city attorney from the city manager and to myself, challenging that opinion. It read, you know, "You reach your final conclusion and advice based on what you believe Commissioner Matlow's apparent authority is. I find no reasonable basis to conclude that a commissioner has individual authority over any part of the city's operations." Mr. City Manager, my question is, is that your legal opinion, or did you consult with outside counsel to form that opinion?
Do you, Mr. Mayor, do you wish for me to answer this question? I mean, that sounds like a, kind of a sarcastic question. I'll be happy to engage in dialogue if you would like.
I'm genuinely curious.
Sure, Mr. Manager, let's hear it.
We want, we want sarcastic dialogue at this point.
Right.
That was my opinion, Commissioner. I wrote it down and I signed my name to it. That was my opinion. I don't know why you would attach whether I'm an attorney or not. That was my opinion, and I'm seeking clarity from you...
That's right.
... in this body, whether I have that responsibility and authority. That's the question in front of you tonight.
And, and I mean, the reason I ask is because we, we looked to the attorney who's eminently qualified to serve the city and was chosen by the city commission to provide us legal guidance, and to receive an email from you contradicting that legal guidance, putting everybody into a point of unknown of what would happen if we proceed, if we can't rely on the basis of our legal opinions being sustained and challenged. That's why I was curious if you were offering an alternative legal opinion, or if that was an actual, that was your opinion or, or from some sort of counsel defending that. I do think the appropriate action, as we see with this item coming forward, that an arrest at that date would have been wholly inappropriate. The other concern I have on this item is it includes not just physical access to city hall, but also to information technology. We had the conversation earlier about SMARSH. I think we need to expand, Mr. Inspector General, not just who's querying SMARSH, but how people are looking at all digital records in the city. And, and I will say, I was shocked to hear from an appointed official, Mr. City Manager, that you said that you or your staff looked at email records between them and another commissioner. Is that something that was said, Mr. City Manager?
This is hearsay. I'm not going to entertain this line of questioning, Commissioner Matlow. The item before us today is simply to confirm the city... is simply to confirm the city manager's responsibility and authority over the aspects of the building management and security for offices within the city facility. I understand that you and the city manager do not get along. I understand that this relationship has been toxic for a while. I'm asking for the good of the body. Let's stick to the item before us. This is not a hearsay witch hunt. You two get together, hash it out on your own time, but not at a city commission meeting. I'm going to move on and recognize another colleague for comment or for direction on this particular item. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just state in regards to this policy. And I've said this, I've said this to all of the appointed officials and to including the city manager. I expect my office to be cleaned. I expect my office to have the right temperature. I expect my office to be ready for me to work in when I come and choose to work in it. And I don't expect that I'm the one to have to make that done. The garbage is emptied, all that is taken care of. City manager's staff make sure that that takes place. City manager's staff make sure that we have security. City manager's staff make sure that if there are problems with the facilities, that's who we call to get those cared for. So in that vein, I don't have a problem with us clarifying what the responsibilities of the city manager and his staff are. It's as if I invited someone to my office who may have had COVID, knowing that everybody up there could be impacted by me bringing an unsafe individual into my office. I, my office is not the only place that I meet people. People have to park and claim and climb up the hill to come meet me at City Hall. I meet people outside of here. So if the meeting needs to take place, it doesn't have to take place in City Hall. Access does not mean, and we talked about this, that technology and the law has not kept up with one another. Access does not mean you have to walk into a physical building. We've had a whole school system gain access to education over computers. We've had individuals gain access to meetings over Zoom and WebEx and all of that. So let's talk about what access means. Access means I get what I need when I need it. I don't have to show up to get it. I can request it and it comes to me. So I do not have a problem with making sure that the city manager understands what I expect to have happen here at City Hall. Anyone coming into City Hall, I expect them to be safe. And when people come and display again and again and again and again that you don't know what is going, what they're going to do when they come in here, at some point, we can't wait until someone gets hurt to then say whose responsibility it should have been. So I want to make sure that we know who to blame or who to give credit to if something should happen to these facilities. Now, I agree that, you know, I know we're trying to have this conversation in and out about access to emails and text messages. Access again means that I get what I asked for. And technology and law have not kept up. I agree, Mr. Clerk. You are the custodian of public record. But the collection of online records, online information is in somebody else's lane, in somebody else's house, but you have access to it. So at what point, and everything that Commissioner Matlow, I disagree that everything in SMARSH is public record. There are some things that are exempt from public record according to Florida statute. There are some things that are exempt and have to be redacted. There are some things that people send to their supervisors that we don't need to know because it's personal. It's what they call PII. I don't know if Mr. Davis is still here or not. But it's that personal information that they're accident, they may be sending it because of the nature of the work that they're in. There are police details that are being sent to supervisors and what have you via the email that cannot be a part of public record because it will create public safety for people who are visiting our city or people who are doing things in our city. So we have to be very careful. It's not a blanket that you just throw over everything. But we've got to be very, very sure that what we do in this building is taken care of by the people that need to be taken care of. And we talk about what a great job everybody is doing, and everybody is doing a great job. Everybody wakes up every day coming in here to do the best job that they can. The clerk, the city attorney, the city manager, Inspector General, and all your staff. That's why you're doing it. And I'd hate for us to get down into the weeds like this when this is, how have we survived all this time without this? So here we are. We're having to define something because of some history, of some behaviors, or some things that have made people feel uncomfortable. So I don't have a problem saying that the city manager is responsible for these facilities, not just City Hall, the other facilities as well, all city facilities. The upkeep, maintenance, care of, security of. That's, I understood that to be the job. Am I wrong? Well, if I'm wrong, then I'm just wrong. But I'm looking at the people, you know, the clerk, the attorney, Inspector General, City Manager, just like I expect, Madam Attorney, to deal with our legal matters and give your opinion as you see fit to give your opinion. Thank you. You do a darn good job. Because I, you know, you do it better than a darn good job. But you know, go keep it clean. So I don't have a problem with what we're being asked.
Is that a motion for option number one?
I move for option number one.
I will second it. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Porter and then Commissioner Richardson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, on the issue of records, just because the city manager oversees and manages IT does not mean that the city manager can block access to those records, of those records to the clerk, who is the custodian of records. I don't have a strong of an opinion about how many people have access or whether that should be just blanketly publicly available or searchable, as much as I do that those decisions are made by the clerk. We just had our annual ethics training, and one of the components of that is the checks and balances. There's a reason that we have independent appointed officials with unique and individual responsibilities and duties. So, you know, and that's what our charter says, and there's a reason for that. So, I mean, what I'm hearing is concerning on that matter. As far as this item, I think it's obvious that when we're talking about issues of security or emergencies, we need someone to be responsible for that. I mean, there's no time to think and decide when there's an emergency. That should go without saying. But I also think it's concerning here that the assumption seems to be that commissioners who are elected by the people cannot use their own judgment about what is safe or not. That, to me, is bizarre. I mean, it's almost like the underlying assumption here is that we don't or that we can't. Obviously, this kind of thing doesn't happen when there is trust between commissioners and management. Usually, there would be a willingness, I think, to find a compromise, to reach an agreement, without coming to this point where we're granting this, giving up our power. I mean, I don't think what we're talking about here is whether our offices are cleaned or there's air conditioning. We're talking about our discretion and our powers given to us by the people who elect us to serve them. I think it's strange and unfortunate that we've come to this. But I think generally what is concerning to me is what seems to be an attempt to consolidate and expand power. I, it's concerning to me, too, that our city attorney gave her opinion and that the city manager seems to have disregarded that legal opinion. So I won't be supporting this. I don't think it's necessary. I trust all of my colleagues to consider what is safe for the public, for each other, for our staff. When we sign up for this kind of thing, we are signing up to engage with the public, people who make us uncomfortable, people who we don't like, people who don't like us. And just because people make us uncomfortable does not make them a threat, a security threat. So I can't, I can't support this motion or the motion.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no problem at all with resting or vesting in the city manager a single point of authority over these issues. You know, sure, I can say I feel comfortable with this person coming to my office. But we've seen instances where that has happened around this country and the person was unstable and things happened. And because, you know, you make the personal judgment that this person is okay, there are others who work in these offices in City Hall that may not feel that same way. They may have reservations of individuals. And this isn't specific to any one individual. I'm talking about the times that we're living in, where we have to make sure that everyone who enters this building, for whatever purpose, feels safe and secure. And if we've got everybody making decisions about who's safe and who's not, then we have a problem. And that's why I believe we need one source of responsibility for ensuring the safety and security of the offices and the individuals in this building. Now, why we haven't done it before now, I don't know.
That's right.
And I certainly don't want it to appear from my perspective. And my vote will not be based on any one single individual. I'm talking about what I see going on in this country generally. Who would think that a six-year-old would bring a gun in a school and shoot his teacher? Who would have ever thought? But it happened in a public facility where that teacher probably would have said, no, that could never happen in a million years. But it did. And I'm sure now they are more conscious of those things likely to happen. And there will be measures put in place to address that. There will be locked doors. There may be metal detectors now at the main entrance. And that's what we're talking about here, ensuring the safety and security of this building. And if everybody has the option to make their own decision about who's safe and who's not, well, you may think that that person is safe and then they come in the suite or in the lobby, and I'm uncomfortable, or the secretary is uncomfortable, or someone feels, then you can't make that decision for them. And so I think it's appropriate that we have the single point of authority for the safety and security of the individuals who work and visit this building. And I have meetings with citizens all the time outside of this building, and it's on my calendar. So if you want to go do a public records request about the meetings that Commissioner Richardson has, they're on my calendar. You know when that meeting will be and where. And it's not necessarily in City Hall. I'm sure tomorrow we'll get that public records request, but I'm fully confident that you won't find anything irregular because I make a point of making sure that that's accounted for in the public record. So I think we just move forward with this. If we have problems, we can, in the future, make changes to the ordinance or policy as necessary, if necessary. But I think that this is a good first step to ensuring the safety and security of this building for all who are, who come here to do the business that they come to accomplish, be that work or other business that they come to the building to accomplish. So I'm for the motion and will be voting for this item.
Mr. Mayor.
My comments.
Sure.
Yes, I wholeheartedly support the motion on the table. And it doesn't do anything but confirm what we've been doing since we've all been elected. And in fact, maybe we need to take a little lesson and remind ourselves on a council management form of government, the whole reason why we have a charter with appointed officials is that they run the day-to-day operations. We do not have a commissioned form of government where I serve as the chair of the Safety Committee and bring recommendations back. And Commissioner Richardson serves as the chair of the IT committee to bring recommendations back. No, we have appointed officials that serve in the capacity of the day-to-day operators of the city. It is our role to have budget oversight, to have policy oversight, and to have local law oversight. So it is very appropriate for us to confirm once again the structure of security in this building. And no, I completely wholeheartedly disagree, Commissioner Matlow. None of us as elected officials have the right to dictate a public safety standard. That is why we have policy that's brought before us to confirm together, not individually. And it is important in today's day and age that we do have certain standards to keep everyone safe. My team is probably on the fourth floor in that wing more than everybody else on a daily basis. And yes, it is my responsibility as their mayor as well for their public safety as much as for the policy and the work that we do. And I love my team, and I'm going to do everything I can to protect them. And I would never do anything to infringe how you feel upon your team, and I ask for the same request. Now, when it comes to the actual structure that we have here, yes, it's very important and it's very appropriate for us to confirm. Currently, security at our facilities are done by a company that's on contract, that reports to the fire department, that works in conjunction with the police department. Both fire and police report directly to the city management. They don't report to the city attorney's office. They don't report to the inspector general. They report to management. IT reports to management. It is very important from the day-to-day operations of city government in a council management form of government that we do have clearly identified roles. And I want to be very clear. Madam Attorney, you are phenomenal. You're one of the best in the business. But that still doesn't mean that I agree with 100% of the opinion. We respectfully disagree because at that, it is a legal opinion and it's not legally binding. Mr. Manager, you know, I think you're one of the best in the business as well. When you give your opinion, it's your opinion. That doesn't mean we always agree. Sometimes I disagree. It's not legally binding. Mr. Treasurer Clerk, Mr. Inspector General, sometimes we have conversations and we just agree to disagree. Your opinion is your opinion, whether it's through the audit. That is why you bring it to us for ratification as a body and not individually. And Mr. Clerk, that is why it's opinion, just like you disagree with my opinion sometimes. But let's be very clear that just because the legal opinion comes from the attorney's office, it is not legally binding. It is an opinion that's supposed to guide us as a body in our decision-making practice. Now, there was one thing Commissioner Porter that you said that I want to make sure that we clarify because we are not denying the clerk's access to SMARSH. You said that on the record, and that is incorrect.
I'll correct it.
The clerk has access. The way how SMARSH works is that through licensing agreements with specific positions within City Hall, whether it's in the attorney's office, the manager's office, the IG's office, or the clerk's office, people have very narrow scopes of how they can access that information. The clerk's office continues to have access. The clerk's office continues to have access. I don't want the public to think that all of a sudden the clerk's office has been cut off. Absolutely not. He is the provider of information when the public records comes through. Now, can't believe I'm having to address this going back. There is an audit that's going on right now with the licensing agreements and who has access and who doesn't. I look forward to hearing from you. As I told you the other day, I don't know what I don't know. That's why we have audits. I think we need to be very careful before we start casting judgment. We just wait and see what the audit says. We audit every aspect of city government. Here is another audit that's being brought before us today. So I will wholeheartedly support the recommended option that is being presented to us. It sounds like it's going to pass on a 3-2 vote, so be it. But this is how it's supposed to work. The recommendations come before the city commission, and we as a body ash it out, and we as a body decide the direction that we want to go. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to clarify, I did not say that he has been denied access. I want to clarify what my point was, that just because SMARSH is housed and administered in the city attorney, in the city manager's office, does not mean that he can restrict that. What did happen was that the city manager interfered with an employee of the clerk's office, removing his access. That I find to be inappropriate. I agree with everything that you said, Commissioner Richardson. I see these as, as sort of separate issues. We already know and I support wholeheartedly, I mean, we have metal detectors, we have security, you know, we have, that is not the concern for me. The concern is, at this point, I mean, what we're basically saying is the city manager can trespass anyone for any reason, and the only recourse that a member of the public can have is to be arrested and challenge that. I think that's dangerous territory personally. I mean, there's nothing stopping the city manager from trespassing me, you know? I mean, just as an example, I don't think that would ever happen, but I mean, you know, I don't, when I, whenever I'm thinking about a policy or what we're doing, and I see where this is going, and I'll wrap up my comments, I have to think about what is the worst-case scenario here, you know? I don't, that to me is unsettling. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Commissioner Porter, and then, and I agree, I mean, that's the whole point of trying to have strong policies and procedures to address these things in advance. I also agree with you, Mr. Mayor, and I think, you know, after this vote, that will be settled commission direction, which I, I will abide by and respect, as we all should, as the governing body of, of the city of Tallahassee, where we don't independently have rights to operate outside the will of the majority. That being said, I have grave concerns when the city manager unilaterally challenges our city attorney's opinion and is going to stay the course without bringing it to the city commission. So I, I appreciate that it appears the city manager relented and has brought this before us for, for clarification, but at the time, it, it was, to me, extremely inappropriate where we are. I, I disagree, I agree with Commissioner Porter's view on the scope. It's a very slippery slope, and maybe he, this person was aggressive today, you know, tomorrow it could be, if you want, your neighborhood wants to speak on environmental issues, we don't want them in City Hall. We're not adopting a policy that clarifies how the city manager exercises that authority, you know, who he's, who he has to have, let have access and who can be prohibited. I think a more thorough policy would, would make sense. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, there's a motion on the table for approval of option number one. A motion was made by the Mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor, sing and clap by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, excuse me, passes 3-2 with Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Matlow in dissent. Do we have any other business to come before us under policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
Mr. Inspector General, you have comments.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to clarify that what I'm doing has been discussed as an audit, it's been mentioned as an investigation. I just want to be clear that what, what's occurring right now is a preliminary review to determine if an additional work, if additional work is needed, such as an audit or an investigation. At this point, it is strictly a preliminary review and has not gone beyond that point.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to be clear about that.
Thank you. Okay, so we are on Citizens to Be Heard on Non-Agenda Items. Mr. Clerk, walk us through.
Mayor, we have about a dozen speakers, all here in chambers, none, none virtually. We will start with Haley Amundson. And as with the earlier parts of our meeting, each speaker will have three minutes for remarks, and I will call them as, as we go.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, and the clerk will let you know when you're at 30 seconds.
Thank you. Haley Amundson with the Citizen Committee on Noise Pollution, 415 St. Francis Street. Since December 7th, 2022, we've had one meeting with city staff, so thank you Deputy City Manager Barber and City Commission for your support. You've all been sent the meeting report this week. The Citizen Committee on Noise Pollution appreciates the meeting, but we are looking forward to having more meetings with city staff to direct, to direct them for all of us to create a comprehensive noise ordinance. Since December 7th, we have an official letter from the president of the Myers Park Neighborhood Association and support from Phoenix South Property Management, which has 11 properties across Tallahassee and over 50% of their properties located downtown, which represents over 400 students, young professionals, and family members. There is incredible momentum to create a comprehensive noise ordinance. The items that the Citizen Committee on Noise Pollution would like to see incorporated in the noise ordinance are sixfold. First, we want to incorporate that 10:00 PM sound regulation cutoff in the urban core, like every other part of the city where Commissioner, where Commissioner Matlow put up a motion and where Mayor Daley agreed on the motion from the October 26th, 2022 City Commission meeting, which is also including regulations on amplified outdoor noise, not live music. Second, the committee would like to incorporate decibel readers or a short distance in feet from the source than 100 feet if we're removing decibels. Austin, Texas has a 30-foot distance from the source of the noise disturbance when they're assessing a noise disturbance for their ordinance. Third, we'd like stronger enforcement than just fines for noise offenders, just like the city of Miami. Miami has fines up to $15,000 for penalties for repeat noise offenders, particularly those that repeat offend amplified outdoor noise. Fourth, definitions for outdoor. This is seen in ordinances from City of Orlando. Indoor, weekday nights, weekend nights. Noise disturbance, which is the overarching umbrella that includes amplified noise definition, which is also seen in City of Orlando's and City of Fort Lauderdale's noise ordinance, again, not live outdoor music. Unreasonably loud, raucous noise. Fifth, sound abatement strategies need to be part of the building codes for new structures constructed within the urban core. Since this is a mixed-use area, to create an 18-hour downtown, there must be considerations for those living and working downtown. The sound ordinance must be more stringent downtown because of the densities and mixed uses.
You're at 30 seconds.
Thanks. This is also in the Austin, Texas ordinance, called Sound Impact Plans. To be consistent with the Tallahassee Leon County Complain, the noise ordinance would also make more sense to have the same county and city ordinance where it's 10:00 PM cutoff, 7:00 AM where it gets lifted. Six, we'd like additional meetings to direct city staff to, to create a comprehensive sound ordinance. More meetings, please. Thank you. We look forward to continuing to work with all of you. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ruby Monguia. I pronounced the last name right, I'm not sure, but I think I got the first name right, followed by Barbara Bumgarner.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ruby Monguia, and my address is 445 Apple Yard Drive. So like I just mentioned, my name is Ruby Monguia, and I have been working with Phoenix South Management for almost one year. And during my time as a leasing specialist, I have heard countless noise complaints from our residents in regards to the noise that comes from the bar and fraternities located behind our properties. I am someone who has worked in multiple environments where people bring their problems to me, and it is my job to find a solution for them. However, with this specific issue, I feel helpless. When a resident comes to me with this issue, I literally have to tell them there is nothing we can do for them. They must simply put up with it. However, recently, we have been advising them to reach out to their city commissioners to stress their concerns, as there is no law that restricts amplified noise until 2:00 in the morning in the urban core. I have had residents tell me numerous ways that they try to block the excessive noise from their apartments, such as ordering noise cancellation tape and putting it on the border of their windows, which they have expressed is not an effective solution. I've had residents tell me that they sleep with earplugs or AirPods in their ears in order to get some relief from the noise that doesn't come, doesn't come to an end until 2:00 in the morning. Because of this, I can understand why our residents have concerns for how they will be able to focus on their studies throughout the rest of the semesters. Although it may be perceived that the majority of the students show up to said bars, there is a population of students and people who live at our properties who would greatly appreciate peace and quiet in their homes by 10:00 PM. I understand this is likely not new information I am sharing with you, as I know people have been fighting this specific issue for years. However, I ask you to ask yourself one thing. What do you like to do when you get home from work? I can almost guarantee it includes cooking or eating dinner, watching TV, maybe getting some work done, relaxing, eventually going to bed. Now imagine your after-work routine with an outdoor concert happening less than 50 feet away, happening multiple nights a week. I get the luxury of going to bed without any disruptions around 10, 11:00 PM each night. And unless you live downtown and are affected by this noise, you likely also get the luxury of going to bed in a quiet, peaceful environment at a decent time, or a time that you choose. I am grateful for my quiet environment and can guarantee that if my sleep was disrupted regularly throughout the year, my mental and physical health would be affected. A good night's sleep is a crucial part of taking care of one's mental and physical health, so I ask you to consider the well-being of those that live in the area and to consider setting a time limit on when the excessive noise must stop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Barbara Bumgarner, and then Mike Goldstein.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Barbara Bumgarner, address 2015 Winthropeway. Again, my name is Barbara Bumgarner, and I'm a retired city employee, as well as one of the principals involved with several residential properties downtown. While serving as the assistant to the city manager in 1987, I worked with Commissioner Dodd and Men Cruz on research regarding San Antonio and Austin, Texas, as part of the first efforts to develop an 18-hour downtown. One of the primary focuses of an 18-hour downtown was to create an environment where people wanted to live. I represent over 400 residents who live in this downtown area, and they represent a mix of young professionals, small families, service industry employees who work downtown, and graduate law students. They choose to live here because of the proximity to the FSU Law School, as well as the convenience of downtown. They like being able to walk to local businesses, food establishments, and businesses like Publix and Walgreens, and they enjoy outside dining in the downtown area. What they do not like is the amplified music and sound night after night after night, late into the morning hours, which disrupts their quality of life. As many of you have, I've had the opportunity to visit other cities who have wonderful downtowns. The French Quarter in New Orleans has many bars with music, but they are not amplified outside where they disturb the residents who live in the quarter. Likewise, New York City, Chicago, Orlando, and Miami Beach, as well as many other cities, have viable downtowns where people live and work with businesses in harmony. They support each other. None of these cities allows amplified outdoor music after 10 or 11 o'clock. With his permission, I would like to give each of you a copy of an email that was written and sent to each of you by one of our downtown residents. In the event that you have not had time to read it, Vitor outlines the concerns of many of our downtown residents.
Want to hand it to the clerk? He'll make sure to distribute it.
Okay, thank you. I urge the commissioners to consider an ordinance that gives people living in the downtown area the quality of life benefits with regards to amplified outdoor music, which is enjoyed by residents throughout the rest of the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Mike Goldstein.
Name and address for the record, please.
Mike Goldstein, 217 West Second Avenue. Hey, guys, back again. So everyone down Gains Street recently in a while with all the stuff going on there. The last piece of history of culture there that's like left standing, that's not fizzled out yet, is the warehouse on Gains Street. I'm sure a lot of us have memories of that place. Jeremy may have played there, maybe you and your band at one point, I don't know, someone might have. But the point is like, how do we save it as a community? Because I'm one person, and I don't have the funds to just throw at their, the owner that wants the money to just not demolish it. It is salvageable, but how do we come together to save a piece of cultural and possibly tell us the history that's sitting right there behind College Town, right behind development of Gains Street, and basically nestled between the FAMU and FDU as a possible venue or community center or something that could be rectified and preserved, not torn down like everything around it that's been brought back up for student housing, but it's a cultural icon. If you ask one out of 10 citizens in this, in the city, they should remember something. A couple got married there, there's been concerts, the Film School film there. I, I went to a, a Alzheimer's fundraiser through a student group on campus that had it as a venue there. So how do we, as a community, save it from getting torn down to become what's around it, which is, that's the eyesore, not the warehouse right now, because the outside is decrepit, the inside's probably worse, there's stuff around it that doesn't look anything appealing, but at one point, it was a cultural place to be. It was, they had jazz nights, they had, a lot of musicians here got their start there. And people forget that because it's just, everyone drives by and walks by and just doesn't give bad an eye, but it's still for sale. The last thing that happened with it, according to the news, was that the folks that built the Cascades Project and the student housing, if I recall correctly, they pieced out of town and said, all right, you guys deal with it on your own now, because we don't want to do anything with it. So that's what happened with that part. And with my last minute, I think last year, I reached out to pretty much everyone on DS that I could. How do we help with the off-duty police situation that's basically gotten out of hand at night because of how it changed? Mr. Goode, I reached out to Ms. Barber, and that's who I've been talking to off, off-site, but how do we salvage the relationship with the police to the clubs and the events and the bars for off-duty? Because after a certain point, there's a waiting game of a time limit between response time to possible situations at venues and at events after hours for off-duty. So how do we get that back to a compromising scenario or a system in place that isn't relying on a 15-minute lapse or more, or something could happen? I know 30 seconds, or something could happen that is, we can't save people at that point that we don't know what that looks like, because I work a lot in these areas and see firsthand, when they do have to come, it's a matter of what could happen that goes worse. So how do we get back to something that may be a flat rate for the officers that entice them to come out?
Just a few seconds.
I know. And so it's up to the club, from what I've just talked with, the club owners dictate the rates. So if an officer isn't enticed by a rate that's too low, they won't come out until they're called and it's too late at that point.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, our, our next speaker, I'm actually having difficulty reading the name, but last name is, begins with an F, it may be a Dillon. And what I'll do, I think, is, nobody's immediately raising a hand, I'll call other names, and if somebody, if I've missed them, then we'll know who I missed. Tina Reason.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tina Reason. I reside at 3217 Earl Drive. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I'd also like to extend my gratitude to all veterans, military, and their families that are present. I'd like to specifically address the Veterans Day Parade and the charge of $3,200, a little over that for barricades. I know that there was a list of 12 events that were assessed this fee. I also am aware that City of Tallahassee donated $5,000 to offset this fee, if you will. The problem that I have is that we just had a remarkable MLK Day Parade where there was no fee assessed. We have people who have dedicated their lives, were drafted, lives changed forever when they took the oath and were aligning themselves with a particular military branch. My family goes back to World War I to currently where my son's in the Marine Corps. I find it disrespectful that, and we talk about unity and wanting to unify our citizens, it feels diversified at this moment when you support an MLK parade, but not the men and women, the brotherhood and the and women, the brotherhood and the sisterhood that have served our country, who have served us, who serve us today, but who didn't have the support back in Vietnam era and Korean War. I respectfully request that you take away the barricade fees for our Veterans Day Parade. Just think about it. Take it back, equalize, and give our veterans the same respect that we give Dr. MLK for his life, legacy, and work, and honor the lives that have been forever changed because of these men right here. It's basic. And you talk about unifying. You've created a division if you don't do this in the eyes of sun. Please, veterans are every color, every culture, every nationality, all from, throughout the world.
You're at 30 seconds.
They want to serve, they want to serve our country. I want to serve my country by standing up for them right now. I don't care if that button goes off. Please, I'm asking you humbly, respectfully, please, please honor our veterans and the lives that are already gone, and for us that miss our loved ones at special events and holidays and birthdays that we don't have them here.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Stanley Sims. Stanley Sims will be followed by Reverend Faust.
Good job, Tina. Very much well said. I'm here today because access. You said that, given the city manager the authority, and people got emails and all of that. I went to the city attorney, because I was referred to the city attorney, because I told her that limited access had been given to me by the auditor. He says that I'm a liar, so he has deemed within himself that him and his staff can only talk to me through email. I go to Tallahassee Police Department because I've had two negative infractions with the who? The Tallahassee Police Chief. He walks out yelling, threatening to arrest me, because I get nervous and I start to record him, because he doesn't remember that I have the right to do this in a public place. He apologized, I accept it. Then he comes back out again while I'm testifying, giving testimony right now, nice, calm, yells out, "Liar!" I go to TPD to file, and more chaotic stuff break out. And now officers who I've asked to walk around and make sure I'm safe, they're being used in another affidavit to permanently keep me out of this building. And I, the attorney, my wife's supervisor, very professional, treated me with dignity. The HR director told me to tell her, and I said, "I know what she's going to say." She said, "I represent the city." So she told me, "Go talk to you." This is nowhere around. She's on the monitor. That happened December 7th. It's over a month. I've talked to Chief Gaines, I've talked to Dana, all within your parameters, your restricted parameters. He slams down the phone on me. What else can I do? Because I asked the city attorney, she said, "Come to you. You're the man now." And you won't answer me. That's not access, Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Reverend Faust. If not here, if he's left, then Chris Kraft is next.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Kraft with Kraft Nissan here in town, and I live downtown, 215 West College Avenue. My wife and I, the other night, were watching WCTV, and we saw the piece that Katie did on the Veterans Day Parade. And, you know, anybody that knows the Kraft Brothers or who's watched our commercials know that we're patriotic. We love this country, we love Tallahassee, and we thank our veterans every day. Any of you all that may be veterans. Decided to see what we could do. I reached out, and WCTV put me in touch with Joe West, and I met with Joe. He kind of gave me the story. I think we heard a lot from it from, is that Tina, Ms. Tina? And we said, you know, what can we do to help? We have the veterans' back. And he said that y'all had put a new fee on, and they weren't sure if it would continue, if they could afford to do it in future years. And, you know, the parade must go on. And I realized that the city, it's their call on events and festivals that you charge for. And I understand expenses and costs and inflation and all those things. But to echo some of the comments, the Veterans Parade is not one of those that needs to be charged for. All right? I feel strongly, I'm very emotional, I get patriotic on this, so apologize. But I told them that if the city won't eliminate the fee and let this parade go on at no cost, then Kraft Nissan will pay that fee every year. Send the bill to me. But I'd rather have you not charge, and I will match that fee and hand it to the veterans to do as they think best and what they need. So I'm simply asking, reconsider. Very worst case, we got your back, the parade will go on, but please consider that, and I know it's your choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Whitfield Leland. Whitfield Leland. Then Guy Roy. Guy Roy is next, followed by Brian Forbing.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Guy Roy, 1576 Spring Creek Highway, Crawfordville. I thank you for hearing us. If anybody knows about Veterans Day, we represent every veteran, all the way back to the Civil War when it was Confederate and Union, on down, World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam. Blood, sweat, and tears, we ran into it. I volunteered. All my brothers and sisters volunteered. The list that you guys put out, we gave them the right to be in parades. Just please, take care of us. You're sitting in those seats because we ran into the bullets. We made we the people. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Brian Forbing, followed by Fred Engley.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brian Forbing. I stay at 511 Dust Bowl Lane, Tallahassee, Florida. First of all, a lot of doom and gloom, right? I don't come here for doom and gloom. I decided that I'm going to make it my agenda every time I come up here to give a good report on what I see happening in the community, especially from the youth's perspective. And I also aim to bring the youth in, actually, so that way they can start speaking and engaging with the public, and let you guys know from their perspective, first person, exactly what their needs are. So I'm aiming to put that together in February. We just recently, I just want to come and give a testimony. So, everybody, I'm super excited to announce that Capital Battery Line just recently attended in West Palm Beach, Florida, Jupiter, Florida, Loxataki, the Loxataki River Battlefield, the 185th Seminole-Maroon Family Reunion. And we went to represent Tallahassee, Florida, and the history that we have uncovered documenting the state's truth of running, which I actually, on the way down, also uncovered that running actually may be, Commissioner Cox, may be extended all the way back to the Stono Rebellion. So we're working on that. But also, we went down to represent in cadence form the representation of all of our state universities, which coincidentally, the mascots align with the chief monikers of the Latro Tribe, the Mika Siki, the Volusia Kalusa Tribe. So we were excited to be engaged in this experience with a company of around 200 members representing Texas, Oklahoma, Mexico, the Bahamas, as well as Florida, members of the descendants of the Seminole and Maroon and African-American communities down in Loxataki. It was an amazing, exceptional experience for the kids. Many of these kids, we only took six, but they represented us in grand fashion. And thanks to Commissioner Matlow and Gain Street Pies, as well as Early's Kitchen and some other members of our community, we were able to go down and represent and treat these kids to first-class service. They had never been to Cheesecake Factory, and their eyes lit up just seeing them be able to look at all the cheesecakes, right? So I thank you guys for, those of members of the community that are supporting us. Like I said, I'm going to come back constantly, every month. My, this is my goal, actually, to become a better public speaker as well, right? So I'm going to use that as a cheat code. But I am seriously ambitious and excited about building this drum line here in Tallahassee, building the drum culture here in Tallahassee, and bringing drum industry. So thank you guys for your support. Couple of things that I am asking for access to, to help us get our drum line reassembled. We have about 46 drum shells that are getting customization and rebuilt. Some of them are antiques that date back to the 50s and 60s, and we're restoring those. Is it access, simple need access to a CNC router? I don't want to ask for a bunch of money. I need resources. I need access to skilled labor and resources. So a CNC router and new drum heads. So if you guys can keep that in your heart as you go back and delegate and think about the Capital Battery Line, what we're doing for the community through the YouTube platform. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Fred Engley, and then John Pantoja.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I just wanted to voice, I'll let you voice my opinion, that it is a crying shame that there was ever any consideration of not funding celebrations honoring both our veterans and our members of law enforcement, who I see are represented both here. Also, I don't see any firefighters or other first responders, but they, like veterans, law enforcement, are individuals who have sworn, if necessary, I will give my life to protect yours. Many of them have done so. I recognize several veterans in this room have been under hellacious conditions in combat. I do believe that the mere fact the city did not even consider not funding the Veterans Day Parade and other celebrations honoring those groups who have sworn to give their life to protect yours and mine. I really hope that the city would strongly consider funding celebrations for both of those groups. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
John Pantoja, followed by Wilson Barnes.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, John Pantoja, and I'm using 241 Lake Ello Drive since my address is actually protected from public record at the moment. As others have come before me here, talking about the recent policy change regarding funding to the Veterans Day Parade. First of all, let me thank the city for the years of support that we've already had, this year's funding of over 20,000, as well as the 5K for the CSRA grants. Again, we are just a little bit upset over the balances there. What I'm here to talk about is why parades should be exempt. First part of is why Betty Ben's Tally is actually here. In 2009, the county was running the parade, and they canceled the day of due to inclement weather. That actually did not happen. That did not go very well over in the community. So a group of BSOs got together, proposed a plan to the city, as far as I understand, and Betty Ben's Tally was created. We run the parade on behalf of the city and the county. This has never been, Betty Ben's Tally presents, or I'm sorry, Betty Ben's Tally's Veterans Day Parade, it's always been Tallahassee, Leon County Veterans Day Parade. That is one reason why we should be exempt. We do it on behalf of the city and of the community. The second half, and as speakers have come before, there is a generation of veterans who, unlike some other ones, never received a ticker-tape parade, or veterans of my era were welcome at the airport. The key word here that describes them, Vietnam. When they came home, some after multiple tours, they were re-ailed at, they were spit on, they had things thrown at them, they were called killers, murderers, baby killers. They did not receive any support they should have. And that is why we have a lot of veterans here that voice their opinion about that. When it comes down to respect, it's because of that. They owe us nothing, we owe them everything. And lastly, I have brought this flag here today. I had the honor of replacing this over a local hero's grave this past Memorial Day. He paid for the parade with his life. I don't really want to bring politics in this and make their names political, but just some of the names of the heroes that we have locally. Daniel Chairs, Robert Cruz, Irving Jones, Michael Knight, Cliff Milander, Hollis Miller, Anthony Simmons, Johnny Stevens, and also one veteran, I'm sorry, one individual, was KIA that is buried in Southside Cemetery, Julius Mitchell. For nearly 50 years, he sat in an unmarked grave. Technically, he still is in an unmarked grave, but however, through efforts of the local veterans' community, we do have a marker there.
You wouldn't mind wrapping up your comments?
I'm sorry?
You wouldn't mind beginning wrapping up your comments, please?
And so is with that, these individuals have already paid for that. The problem is not about money, as you can see there, it is about, you know, it's already been paid for or whatnot. So that asks that the city reconsider, and I am willing to work with the city on making the adjustment on the policy.
Our next speaker, please.
Wilson Barnes, followed by Joe West.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
I am Colonel Wilson Lee Barnes, US Army retired, and I live at 1949 Setting Sun Trail. Got a lot of mixed emotions up here, because I'm one of them African-American veterans that some allusion to. And we died at a disproportionate high rate in Vietnam than others. Awarded us tonight, the Hun First Airborne Division, trouble out there in the Hushaw Valley. But the first thing I want to say is, the city has always, to the extent that I know, given great parades. I've seen you there, Mr. Mid, and see this last time, I guess you were taking a vacation on that political season that you were involved in. Challenging one, I should say. But I got real concerned when I saw in the paper and went to a meeting recently at the Vietnam Veterans House over here, next to the American Legion. And I was informed of the fact that the city had come out with a policy in which it was going to ask the veterans for reimbursement. I got real concerned, I must say. I thought about 68,000 of my brothers, sisters who are still in Vietnam, gave their life, they gave their lives there. And I guess, since you all have been doing such a good job, I can't help but thinking that maybe it's just an oversight in this policy. Because in the NAACP, we had to fight you to make sure that it's in charge just for parades on Dr. Martin Luther King's parade days and things like that. So I can't help but think it was just an oversight. We had a staff, officer, even some of these commissioners, they never took in the basic training, some of you all, and some of you have. One or two have, and we all have relatives who have taken basic training. So what I wanted to ask you is, if in fact, you are now charging veterans organizations for the parade, that you immediately for the parade, that you immediately rescind that and make the Veterans' Day Parade the same as the NAACP, because I care deeply about both institutions. NAACP, which I'm a Golden Herd member of, and the veterans organizations. I gave 30 years of my time, my life, to defending this country as a member of the U.S. Army. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Joe West. And Mayor, that's the last speaker I have, so if there's someone else who needs to speak, they should let it be known.
Sounds great. Name and address for the record, please.
Joe West, 241 Lake Ella Drive is the address I use. I want to thank you all for taking time to listen to us, and I want to thank the other veterans who've came in. When I came before this commission in December, I spoke of what I consider the disrespect shown to the veteran community by the city commission and staff. I stand by that statement. I also stated that if the city needed money so badly, you all could do the parade yourselves. That statement was out of line as I did not have board approval to make that decision. Let me take you all back a bit because you're all pretty young here. It's 1969. I've just been sworn into the United States Army. I was a kid from Iowa who had never been on an airplane and was now on his way to Fort Lewis, Washington. And it was all very exciting, though my enthusiasm would dim somewhat in about eight hours when I met my drill sergeant. I was a naive kid in a brand-new world. I would less than a year later find myself on a 22-hour-long flight to Vietnam. I had just turned 20 years old. 12 months later, I returned from what would turn out to be the most influential year of my life. I was three months into my 21st year and I had no idea what I was in for. I was at processing to get discharged. A large sign hung said, "Do not travel in uniform as you will be subject to civilian harassment." I nor my brothers could believe it. We were aware of the anti-war movement here, but couldn't believe people would be mad at us. We just could not believe what we read, so of course, we traveled home in the uniform we were all proud of. Myself and another brother went to Chicago together. We were going to split up there. Excuse me. We were approached by two young ladies in the San Francisco Airport about our age. It was September 1971. Hair lengths had gone down, hem links had gone up. 30 hours ago, we were in a country in the middle of a civil war. Now, we're standing, looking at two pretty girls and had no idea what to say to them. That wasn't a problem because they had something to say to us. They both called us baby killers and wanted to know how we could shoot women and children. Needless to say, they didn't care for my response, but we now had a feeling about how our country felt about us, and that was just the beginning. It continued throughout the 70s and into the 80s. You never put on a job application that you were a veteran. You kept your veteran status to yourself and we isolated, which was a big mistake. Veteran service organizations like the American Legion and the Veterans of Foreign Wars didn't want anything to do with us. VFW had a national rule that Vietnam veterans were not eligible for their membership. Not only were our fellow citizens angry with us, but the brothers whose footsteps we had followed abandoned us as well. You just didn't tell people you were a Vietnam vet. Back to today. The Board of Vet Inc. will continue to produce the best-earned Veterans' Day Parade in the country in spite of what I perceive as blatant disrespect. When this commission, on the recommendation from staff, decided that the parade we put together to honor the men and women who proudly served in this country's armed forces was no more significant than Kid Fest or the Gay Pride Parade, for me, it brought back what it was like in the 70s. When I didn't dare tell anyone I was a combat veteran, and I'll be damned if I'll ever be ashamed of that again. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
That was our last speaker, Mayor.
We've had quite a bit of discussion about the Veterans' Day Parade. Let's talk about this and let's see where we are. Colonel Barnes, would you please join me up here? I need a familiar face, friendly face to look at and have this conversation. Just join me at the podium here. You've known me all my life, correct, sir? Pretty much?
And I knew your daddy.
That's right. Who?
Was a great man.
Who was a veteran as well.
And a veteran, yeah.
Even though I didn't. Well, let's start on this journey. In 2009, I was on the county commission. We had a Veterans' Day Parade that was established. We have government rules on when we have inclement weather, and the Veterans' Day Parade was taking place at the end of hurricane season.
Sure.
Unfortunately, we had a weather pattern that was coming towards Tallahassee at the time. It was proposed wind gust over 30 miles per hour, which I know you can understand that when we have proposed wind gust, they go above a certain level, we cannot operate our fire department trucks, we cannot operate the fire engines, we cannot operate the heavy equipment, the first responders. As the government, out of the duty of respect and public safety, we had to call that parade. Now, unfortunately, the storm did not materialize like it was proposed it would be. But nonetheless, the county and the city had to make the call early on, and it was unfortunate. I do understand that there were those that were unhappy with the decision and decided that they were going to step up to the plate and provide leadership, and they have done an absolutely tremendous job running the parade. Vet Inc. has been a great organization to work with, since I've served on the county commission and worked with them through the Veteran Benefits Office on the county level and as mayor of the city of Tallahassee. But here we are today. Colonel Barnes, I'd love a copy of all of the correspondence from Vet Inc., you and any other organization here, that you all have sent over to Sheriff McNeil's office in regards to the barricades. We're going to identify the problem and its source, and then I've got some solutions here.
Okay.
But the city is not necessarily the bad guy here in particular, and there is no bad guy. We are all victims of circumstance. And when COVID hit, what you saw not only in the Leon County Detention Facility, but also on the state level as well, that a lot of the nonviolent offenders were rightfully released and able to go home for public health reasons. Okay? This is my understanding of the situation. Correct me if I am wrong. That immediately impacted two aspects of our community that we're feeling right now. Number one is trash pickup. Remember, we used to see nonviolent offenders run through the sheriff's office in State of Florida that would work the state highways and the local roads to pick up trash. We don't have those programs anymore because the sheriff does not have the personnel to be able to execute those programs and pick up the trash. The barricades was the same issue. So, it was the sheriff's department, actually, that came out and would set up the barricades for our events. Am I correct on this, Mr. Manager, or am I misspeaking?
You're correct.
So, what happened was is that after COVID, the sheriff informed the city of Tallahassee and the county, he doesn't have the manpower in the detention facility of nonviolent incarcerated individuals to be able to perform those duties, therefore, he will not be performing them at all. Overnight, we inherited this issue. We first encountered this with Springtime Tallahassee Parade and said, literally, a couple of weeks before the parade, how are we going to handle this? The sheriff's office traditionally has placed the barricades up on the roads. They are no longer going to do this. We do not have the manpower. How are we going to handle this? And either we're going to have to contract to be able to put the barricades up, or we're going to have to work out some legal liability to allow the organization to do so. And then we realized it's also going to impact the Veterans' Day Parade as well.
And the NAACP.
The NAACP does not run the Martin Luther King Parade. That is done by the city of Tallahassee. We do it internally. It is a shorter parade, and it is 100% run by the city, by the leadership of the mayor pro temp that created the idea two years ago. That is 100% run by the city. It is a much shorter parade route to be able to absorb the cost because nothing is for free, whether it's the barricades, no matter what the parade route is. So, what we did with all the organizations that are having the parades is we went back and we said, and there was an organizational meeting, I believe, last May or springtime, where the parades and the organizations that host them would come to the table, and we said, "We're going to be able to in-kind up to about 84% of the parade." Now, the cost of the Veterans' Day Parade, let's say, hovers around $25,000. I'm using round numbers.
Sure, sure.
And so, we in-kinded 84% of the parade, okay? Which means we're covering the cost of it, and I believe that covered, and Joe, I'm looking at you as well, about $22,000, $23,000 of the $25,000. But we also got really creative up here and said, "How can we pull the resources together locally to cover the cost of the parade?" See, we not only sit as the city commission, but we also sit as the CRA. And we're in charge of both the downtown CRA and the Frenchtown-Southside CRA.
Sure.
And we have a pot of money in the downtown CRA for big events and for parades. And so, what we did was we extended the invitation for Vet Inc. and other organizations that have parades to apply for what's called large event grant funding. And as a result, the city of Tallahassee in-kinded 84% of the parade, but yet, as the CRA, we turned around and wrote a $5,000 check to cover the cost of the barricades. In turn, your government, between the city and the CRA, did cover the cost through in-kind and through the financial donation of the operation of the parade. So, we can move forward and have the conversation. Number one, I suggested as a community, we go back and have a formal conversation with the sheriff to see if we are back in a position and have enough manpower, if you will, of nonviolent incarcerated individuals that traditionally through the sheriff's office helped us with the setting up of the barricades, which would alleviate this problem to begin with. That was caused by COVID, and maybe we're there, and the sheriff can bring that back and really help us all out. In the event that that option is not available, absolutely, we can take care of all of the cost of the parade, but just know what's going to happen is, is that the CRA will just write the check to the city of Tallahassee to cover the cost of the barricades, and you just won't be a part of that, and that's fine. We can handle that.
You don't charge the veteran organization for the parade?
The CRA will just write a check, and it has to be approved by the CRA, okay? But instead of having the third party of the check go into the veterans organization that then comes to the city, we'll just take the veterans organization out of the mix and have the CRA directly fund the city of Tallahassee for what those charges would be.
But the veterans organizations for this parade honoring these fallen soldiers and airmen will not have to reimburse, make any kind of reimbursement. That's the point I want to get to.
Correct. And Colonel Barnes, let me remind you that again, we in-kinded 84% of that parade.
I got it.
Covered the remaining cost with a financial donation. So, technically speaking, the government did pay for the cost of the parade. One way or the other, either through a financial donation or through the in-kind services. It was covered through the CRA and through the city of Tallahassee.
Yeah, but now we'll do it this way. We'll make sure the veterans don't have to pay, because it's nothing like having all those high school ROTCs, junior ROTCs, Florida A&amp;M University Band, the Florida State University Band, all the law enforcement. It's nothing like it. I got chills, you know? And I remember some of the soldiers who died, no longer with us.
Understood. And that's why Colonel Barnes, when the veterans community came to this city commission and asked us to cap off financially, the bell tower at the National Cemetery, we did not blink. And that is why when the veterans community came to us and said, "We need you to support taking our veterans to Washington, D.C.," we do not blink on an annual basis.
That's great.
And that is why we support our veterans through our volunteer actions. I attend, or a member of my staff has attended for the past four years, every commander's meeting, once a month down at Post 13. We go on and on, and we do support our veterans in this community. This is just an issue that we have to work through. Now, as mayor, I'm interested in hearing, in writing, from Vet Inc., if they are going to be the organization that runs the Veterans' Day Parade. Are they willing to work with us? Or are we going to just move forward and have to find another organization to do so? We don't have to hammer this out right now, Mr. West. I look forward to talking to you about this, and you could just let us know. If Vet Inc. continues to want to be the leader, let's do it.
Let me make a suggestion to you.
Yes, sir.
You guys don't have a veteran services officer in the city, do you?
No, we have a county veterans office, and we work directly 100% with the county.
You need to also work with old Ben Braswell.
We do. Every day.
And all of this, this whole thing. You know, let's get Ben Braswell involved.
I've said that from the very beginning, and we work very well with the Veterans' Benefits Office at the county and with Ben. I mean, when I was a county commissioner, I worked with them as the Veterans Benefit Office. No, we've got an incredible working relationship.
I've talked to at least three or four of those commissioners. They don't believe in charging veterans organizations zero for a parade.
I don't think you're understanding me, sir. We did not charge. Between the in-kind donation and the financial contribution, we did cover the cost. But I think we have some solutions to work through.
Yeah.
And this is not the time, we're not going to, you know, make a motion to pay for it right here and there. But what I'm saying, colleagues, I think we have some options, but I do think, and I'll be more than happy to work with the veterans associations to work, to see if the sheriff is back in the position to be able to help us out.
I've talked to the sheriff, too.
Yeah, come on, Joe. Yeah, come on, Joe.
I will, I will on record tell you that Veteran Events in Tallahassee Incorporated will continue to put on the Tallahassee Leon County Veterans' Day Parade in Ad Fidham whenever, forever. I will follow that up with an email to you, Mayor, and the commission stating that, but we, whatever my personal feelings are, has nothing to do with the fact that this organization puts on a great parade, and they will continue to give this city and this county the parade that they've always had. Thank you, sir.
Mr. West, are you still a member of the board of directors or an officer of Vet Inc.?
I'm still president, actually.
Okay.
I didn't resign. No. I'm, we're, no, no, no.
Mr. West, I'm sure, just send me, send me formal communication via email, and we're going to work this out, okay?
All right. That's, yes. I will be past president. We have a new president coming in next month, but I am still on the board of directors and will continue to oversee what I can do to help with them continue what they do. Is that clear?
Understood.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Let's move to commissioner discussion with anybody like, it's been a long day. Commissioner Richardson?
Mr. Mayor, I first of all want to address this issue because there were remarks made this evening that were very disheartening and hurtful to me as an individual. As an individual from a family of eight children, who six of my brothers served in the military. My father served in the military. My immediate family has almost 100 years of military service at a time, sir, when it wasn't easy for an African American to serve in the military. I didn't serve, but my service has been public service. I have a daughter now who is a naval officer and one who is applying to the Naval Academy. My wife and I have supported veterans activities in this county. Colonel Sanchez and the Veterans Stand Down. Joe, you've seen me at the American Legion post at every veteran event that's been sponsored that the public has been invited to attend. I, my wife and I attend every Memorial Day service at the veteran cemetery, and the list goes on and on, and that's just me personally and my family. But to say that we disrespect our military veterans when all of us are well-aware, we wouldn't be where we are today without the sacrifice that our veterans have made throughout the years, continue to make to this day. And to say that we are disrespectful because we can't agree on $3,200, I couldn't let that go without being addressed. And here we are at a point where we've got a solution through discussion that could have been had, and none of this necessarily had to happen. But I could not let you all leave here without addressing that for the public here and on our social media to hear. We do not disrespect our veterans and what they have given to this country and making our democracy be the premier form of government that it is and the model for the world to emulate. I wanted to make that clear before you all left here, and I hope that we never hear those kinds of remarks about our commitment to our veterans in our country again. I just had to say that because it was, it was, it was really hurting my heart, what I heard this evening.
All right. Colleagues, if you don't mind, I'm going to bring a couple of things up, and I need to excuse myself and pass the gavel. Real quick, first and foremost, FSU Cheerleaders won the national championship. And as we do with all of our university sports teams that hit the high note, we always bring them in chambers, and I think it's appropriate that we reach out to the coach of the FSU cheerleading squad and figure out the appropriate day to bring them in the chambers to celebrate national championship. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion, any problem with that?
Do it.
Wonderful. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. So, I will work in conjunction, I had completely forgotten today, my mistake, as we were having discussion about the bicentennial, that my office is technically taking the lead on discussion about the bicentennial, that my office is technically taking the lead on that. And so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to put all of our thoughts on paper. A lot has happened since we've talked about this. Whether we continue to take the lead or not, we will present, and we can figure out the direction, whether it needs to be under management, or if y'all want my office to continue to take the lead. But I would, I think it's important to bring something back to y'all at the next meeting so that, or the, the next appropriate meeting so that we can begin that great work, okay? Any, any, any problems?
As long as we're playing pickleball in Bicentennial Park.
There you go. There you go. There you go. I do want to make a motion that we bring back an agenda item in the near future, creating an RFP specifically for the academic study to readjust the impact on poverty in our community and especially 32304. As we talked about earlier today, it's been a decade since the Richard Florida study that labeled 32304 as the poorest zip code in the state of Florida. And again, while there has been much discussion over methodology and data samples, I think that this community has come together, has truly worked hard to move the needle, and it is time for us to check on the status of our community and help provide us, along with our strategic plan, how to move forward. So at an appropriate meeting in the future, I would like for an RFP, because we can't single-source it, we need to put it out, for a study to be done, the impact of poverty. Yes, ma'am?
I would second that motion and would like to have a comment.
Sure, go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I agree that it is, it is time to do it, and I will continue to say that I never believed that 32304 is the poorest zip code in the state of Florida, because I know of areas that are way, way documented poorer than 32304, where Florida State sits, where TCC sits, and other affluent neighborhoods sit, that 32304 cannot be the poorest zip code in the state. And I talked to the person who made that statement, and they backed off of that. But we ran with it, and I just want us to make sure that when we do it this time, that we have receipts, we get data to verify and validate that.
Again, I think you're correct. Unfortunately, it's a moniker that is often repeated, and I think in order for us to move past that mark, it is going to take another academic study to really highlight where we are and where we're going. So I appreciate you seconding the motion. Any other comment on the motion on the table? See none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Mayor Pro Temp, thank you very much.
I, I need your, I may need your support real quick.
Okay.
I wanted to, and thank you, thank you, mayor and colleagues. I wanted to also ask for an agenda item to come back, city manager, and perhaps city madam attorney, regarding the number of events that can be held at the Adderley.
Oh, yeah.
I know that we were bound by so many at Capital Cascades, but now that it is the Adderley, I want us to see if we can look at having more events there. You know, the mayor spoke to it earlier today, but I think we, we want to take a look and see what that looks like and where can we, we go with that.
I'll second that motion.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Right. Commissioner Mallow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I first want to address the veterans. I think, I think the mayor gave an accurate history of how, how things played out, but and I think what happened is, in the course of the bureaucracy of this change and trying to figure out how things got funded, the end result was veterans received a bill that they never received before. And a, a lot of folks felt like that was a slap in the face, and it was disrespectful. And for that, I, I apologize. That, that was never the intent. And I think with a little more forethought, maybe we could have prevented that. But nevertheless, it happened, and I apologize it happened. But I do think we've charted, of course, as laid out by the mayor earlier, that your local government does want to continue to, to, to fund, fund that, that event, and we can make it happen through, through different means where, you know, bills are never sent directly to the veterans. And, and you know that you have your local government's support, both the city of Tallahassee and the CRA, to continue. So we appreciate you all coming out tonight. This is what democracy is about. When you're angry, let us know. When you're happy, let us know. If you're really happy, please come let us know, because we don't get that very often. But, well, we appreciate you.
No, well, we, we, while, while we appreciate that, Tina, we're not, we're not, that's not what we're doing, and I don't want it to be looked like it, like that. And, and you and I are going to talk offline because I didn't like the comparison to the Martin Luther King Day Parade.
Neither.
Because there's, there's a difference.
There's a difference.
But we'll talk off, we'll talk offline about that. We're going to go on with, with the...
But thank you all.
Absolutely.
Don't mess with the Dr. Martin Luther King celebrations either, please.
Colonel, Colonel, we...
We're all on the same page.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Mallow, please continue.
Just moving forward, I apologize I had to leave the retreat early. Mr. Manager, I, I did want to follow up on that request for the team's arrest rate. I don't know if it, it could be later if it's not...
We've got it. Thank, thank you for the reminder. It was zero. There were no arrests resulting from the 2,300 interactions.
Awesome. That, that's great to hear. And then lastly, the, the mayor has left, but I did want to address some comments that were made earlier. I think, you know, as we have challenging conversations and we work together, you know, it was, it was, it was said that I some sort, I had some sort of motivation that was against the manager, which was fueling the questions I was asking. I've employed thousands of people in my career, and none of my questions are personal. But I do think it's important when information comes to light to the city commission that we have those conversations at this board. And I, and I think the public deserves to know what the answers to those questions are. So I, I was disappointed to see, you know, roadblocks set up to stop us from getting the answers that we need. But I, I just hope, you know, I don't question the motivations of other people on this board, whatever is motivating them to ask their questions. I think as a, as a spirit of collegiality, we, we should never do that. We should talk about the issues and the face value of, of why we're discussing them. But that's a conversation for another day. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter?
I was going to ask for the update on the bicentennial, but that's already been addressed, so nothing for me. Thank you.
All right. The day has been far spent. And if I had intended to make any comments, I'm not able to remember them right now. It has, we, we've had a very, very long day, and I think that as a result of us having time together, we're, we're learning to communicate better, hopefully, because that's where, that's where it lies. That's what residents expect us to do. And I, I just operate in, if I have an issue, I don't need to put it on public display. I take the issue to where, where it exists, get the information, resolve, try to resolve it. And if I can't resolve it, I need to bring it to this, to this forum, I bring it. But otherwise, I, I think that it is important for us to have relationships that foster positive conversation. In this world of what we're seeing now, and I say this all the time, as, as the earth continues to heat up, we're getting meaner. And that's unfortunate. That, that's unfortunate. We need to learn how to have some dialogue, some conversations, not emails, not text messages, not tweet, tweets. We need to have face-to-face, mono-to-mono, lady-to-lady, whatever, conversations, because there's so much that we can learn from one another if we could just talk it out instead of being so ready to fight it out. So I'm encouraging us to, let's do that. Appointed officials, commissioners, we, 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 can we, as, as Joan Rivers used to say, can we talk? So let's, let's, let's talk about it, and then those things that we cannot resolve, then we bring it here, because our citizens see on the national news all of this discord. They don't need to see that here in the city of Tallahassee, because we can work our problems out, but we've just got to work together and talk to one another and just do the best we can to be good people. With that being said, if anybody has anything else? The mayor had to leave early. His wife, let me just tell you, his wife is out of town, he got to go get his kids. So we all know what that's about. So thank you all so very much.
Mayor Pro Temp?
I just want to say, just to end on a, a very positive note, I, I have to tell you, I was very hurt by those remarks that were made, because I know the sacrifice that my family personally made and the support that I've given veterans. So for somebody to suggest, and, and I know none of us disrespect our veterans, we honor them for the service that they've given. But, but today has been a very productive day. It's been very informational, a lot of, we've gotten a lot of information. I, I think that, you know, when I see the kind of spirit, I guess is a word I could use, that we saw today, us having spirited conversation, knowing the direction that this city is headed, I see a very bright horizon for the city of Tallahassee with the very knowledgeable and talented staff that we have. I have ultimate faith and confidence in the staff that works for the city of Tallahassee. And when I have questions, I go to them with those questions. I don't air it in a public forum unless we can't come to some type of agreement, because that's what the people of this city who elected us to serve, I think, expect of us, that we're all working together to come, come to common solutions through communication. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to, to this year and all of us working to continue to move our city forward and us be the beacon of light that others, you know, when, when you talk about people looking at cities and seeing what they're doing right, I want them to name Tallahassee as the very first city that comes to mind that's leading the pack in terms of economic development and housing and, and, and healthcare for our citizens and revitalization and redevelopment of our neighborhoods that have been neglected over the years. What we're doing through our Southside Action Plan, I don't know of another community that's investing what the city of Tallahassee is investing in its traditionally African-American communities than what we're doing right here in Tallahassee. If there is one, somebody bring it to my attention, because I don't know of it. We consistently get recognition for the things that we're doing, our public utility, we named among the top 10 cities in the state of Florida to live, out of over 400 municipalities, the top 10. Unfortunately, we didn't hear a whole lot about that. But that's the direction, I think, that we need to go in as, as the leadership, as the commission, working with our staff, we, we've got to have that level of trust. Because if we don't have that, it's going to be very difficult for us to work together and be productive. And communication, clear, concise communication about what we expect and the direction that we think this city ought to be headed as our leaders. So I, I want to commend all of my colleagues for the work that we have all put in. It's been a good day, and the best is yet to come. Thank you, Madam Pro Temp.
And that is why he is the dean of the city commission. Meeting adjourned.